Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Counselor Yem?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yep.
Counselor Getchea?
Here.
Counselor Janess?
Here.
Counselor Leahy?
Counselor Mercia?
Here.
Counselor Nun?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Roth?
Here.
Counselor Scott?
Here.
Welcome back, Counselor.
Thank you.
And I want to welcome everyone to the chamber this evening for the meeting and I want to welcome everyone watching at home as well. Before we start the meeting, any memorial, any moment of silence? Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber to Glenn F. Aho, son, brother, uncle, nephew, cousin, and friend. In our case, a great friend to my children, a true gentleman. He was the beloved son of Donna and James Aho of Drakett. Glenn was born in Lowell. He attended Drakett schools and graduated from Greater Lowell Vocational School, where he was a member of the football team and was selected to play in the Shriners game. He worked for many years with his father in land surveying. Glenn had many wonderful friends and was well-liked. He will be dearly missed. In addition to his loving parents, Glenn is survived by his brother David and his wife Laurie and their two daughters, Justine and Emily. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber for our seven-year-old girl named Anna Memburu, who wandered away from her home and met tragedy. We offer our sincere sympathy to her family, relatives, and many friends. We also offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber to all those who passed on since our last city council meeting. Thank you.
Any other memorials, moment of silence? If there's none, I'd like to add to Counselor Mercia's request for a moment of silence for the young Anna. The passing of Anna Buru, aged seven, has left the city of Lowell and its community completely shocked and heartbroken. The daughter of Peter and Phyllis Buru, Anna was described as a very happy child, being someone who spent her time laughing, smiling, and being with her family. Anna especially loved to play. This includes with toys, balloons, trampolines, and the swings at the playground. A member of the Riley Elementary School, Anna was said to be incredibly bright student with a particular interest in art. As a community, Lowell sends its prayers and wishes to Buru family, who as members themselves will never truly be alone during this time. And I also want to extend our gratitude and thank you to the Lowell Police Department, the Fire Department, the first responders, to all the law enforcement agencies in the surrounding region who came out to help. Also want to thank the residents, especially the residents around East Merrimack and the Beverly Hills area, but really the residents of entire city of Lowell for that night and in the morning after. Everyone was out there, especially in the night. Everyone was out with flashlights, helping to look through backyards and neighbors' houses just to help find the little girl. It's heartbroken for everybody, but you know, I could say this, you know, from what I've seen, from what I've known, it's times like this is what make the city of Lowell stronger. We always come together to support each other in times of need. And I want to extend the heartfelt condolences to the Moburu family. Please know that all of our hearts and our prayers are with you. Please, Madam Clerk, dim the light and have a moment darkened chamber. We now start the meeting with the mayor's business. 2.1 Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott, on favor of the IPOSA note, I have it. Motion is carried. This is gonna, section 2.2 is gonna be a very exciting presentation of one of the biggest and most well-known festivals in our city. It is a presentation on the Lowell Folk Festival presentation. I'd like to welcome Arthur Sutcliffe, the entire Folk Festival volunteers to be here. And I understand that Lee Velissis is gonna make a presentation. Lee? And Audi?
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and Consulors. We're a little more than two weeks away from the most exciting weekend in this city, the Lowell Folk Festival. Thirty-six years of fun in bringing people from all around into this city, showing them what this city can offer as far as entertainment, friendship, and just getting together and having a good time. We are proud to do it. This is my thirty-six year of doing it, and it doesn't get old. Doesn't get, it gets a little tiring, but it doesn't get old. So, we're happy that the Lowell Festival Foundation, along with the city, are partners to bring this together to the city. And let's all attend, let's all have a great time, and I guarantee you, it will be fun. At this time, I want to introduce, the Festival Foundation has hired Lee Velissis to be our festival coordinator, who helps, you know, arrange everything going on it. And I'd like to give her the mic just to explain a little bit some of the new things that are happening this year.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lee Velissis. I am the Lowell Folk Festival Coordinator. I am very excited. You all received our invitation for our celebration sponsorship dinner, as well as the schedule of events. We have seventeen groups coming this year, including the return of our street performers at the corner of Merrimack and John Street, an incredible world-renowned photo singer that is coming to us with support from the Saab Foundation. We have incredible selection that spans the entire globe. We are extremely excited to welcome these artists to Lowell, to experience their work, for them to experience each other's work. We have a number of symposium workshops that will be happening at St. Anne's and at Market Street that you are all going to see. Incredible opportunities for artists to interact, which is at the core of what the festival has always been about. It has been about experiencing the traditional music and letting it come to life in new manners and new ways so that it continues to grow into the future, and we hope that it will continue to grow for many years. We are happy to bring, to welcome back recycling, a program that is EPA, not only EPA certified, but EPA acclaimed, and is the marking point of what festivals should have, should work to achieve as far as maintaining the least economical and ecological impact. We are excited and pleased to be partnering with the Lowell Litter Crew, who does incredible work around the city to help maintain our waterways, our streets, our city, and keep it beautiful. We are so excited that we have this partnership going and welcoming recycling back. And finally, we are, we have two new sort of experiences. We have an experience of Lowell partnered with Mosaic Lowell, our opportunity to invite thirty-seven artists and twenty-five, I think, organizations into the Enterprise Bank parking lot. This is an opportunity much like the artist gallery at Winterfest, to bring our small business partners to the Lowell Folk Festival in a way in which they have support and community so that they are able to share their wares and their influence on the Lowell artistic scene. And we have a multilingual effort happening with thanks to our festival grant from the city. We are printing all of our print materials this year in the four major languages of Lowell, English, Camay, Portuguese, and Spanish. This will allow community members whose English is not their first language, of which over thirty percent of our city is a part of, and it will allow them to have easier access. We're striving to have translators at our info booths, native speakers, individuals who can help guide and direct in the most easiest accessible ways possible. And we'd like to thank the city for that support in that effort. It's gonna be a great weekend, and I hope that I see every single one of you and so many more. Thank you all.
Any comments or questions by any of the Consulors? Counselor Mercia?
Thank you. That was, I don't know how she remembered all that, but that was amazing. I just wanted to know, are we still gonna have an ethnic booth like at JFK Plaza? We used to have all ethnic foods. When you get my age, the only thing you look forward to is a good meal, and so I enjoy all the ethnic foods. We, we're gonna have that still?
Rita, I promise you that we have, not only at JFK, but at Market Street and at Boarding House Park, we have, I think it's twenty-two or twenty-four groups.
Oh, thank you.
We have a new group. We have more groups that have moved from Market Street to JFK so that they can have longer hours and be there all three days. All the global foods will be cooking up a storm.
Oh, that's good.
And of course, all those groups are community nonprofits, so their proceeds go to help support their, their cause.
Thank you so much. That's good news. Thank you.
Any Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank you both for coming down and making your presentation tonight. As a downtown resident, it is the best weekend downtown, and I look forward to it every year. And so, I just thank you all for your work, your hard work on this, all the volunteers who help out. It really takes a village to pull this off, and it really makes the city look great. And so, I'm just so happy to see it back again and look forward to celebrating with everyone. And while we're here, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with everybody, I'd just like to make a motion to suspend the rules so we can take 7.3 out of order to go with this, simply because it is the license agreement with the Festival Foundation. That'd be nice if we could just button this up while they're here.
Second.
Second by Counselor Nguyen. Before we take on that motion, I wonder if any other questions, comments on the presentation on the Folk Festival before we go to the next line item? Before going to the next line item, I do wanna make a quick comment or maybe a question about the Folk Festival. It's one of the largest, if not the largest, free Folk Festival in the country, and what makes it work is that there's a lot of volunteers. There's a huge cost to running the Folk Festival, but what makes it work is like the different volunteers at every steps of the festivities. But I think, having spoken with Danielle McFadden, I volunteer with the Bucket Brigade for the past few festivals, I understand that this year we don't have that many volunteers for the Bucket Brigade, which is responsible for collecting funds to help offset some of the costs that make it free to the public. And the past few Folk Festival, I, like I said, I volunteer with Danielle. If people want to volunteer for the Bucket Brigade, in addition to Danielle, who can they contact to sign up?
There is, the volunteer page on our website takes you directly to our contact at the National Park, and she's able to then process and assign out the many varieties of volunteers. So, as much as the Bucket Brigade is one of our most important volunteers, there are many paths to volunteering at the festival, and anything from sorting at the recycling plant to manning merch tents and giving out beads with the Bucket Brigade. You can go to our website and our volunteer page and enter your information there.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. And again, I will volunteer on the Bucket Brigade again. I'm gonna try to recruit maybe about ten people. And I'd like to ask the Consulors to please help out with the Bucket Brigade, because that's fun. I mean, like Lee mentioned, there's a lot of different areas to volunteer in, but I can tell you the Bucket Brigade, you get to wear this bright yellow T-shirt, looks fantastic, and you have a lot of fun. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Is this the first year that all printed materials are gonna be multi-language?
Yeah. This is, when sitting in a meeting hosted by Mosaic Lowell, one of the comments that was shared in that session by one of the artists was the fact that a lot of languages exist in the city, that there are seven really common languages and four that are dominant in the city. And that was an effort that we heard and took really to heart and decided that we can do our part by making sure that language translation is available and accessible. So, this is the first year for that initiative.
Thank you. That's great to hear, and thank everybody that made that possible. I think that's really rolling out the red carpet for our guests and our residents. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other comments or questions on the presentation, we're gonna take up item 7.3, motion by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Nguyen, to take this out of order and take a vote on it. 7.3 is vote, license agreement with Lowell Festival Foundation. And the city council vote authorizing the city manager to execute a license and temporary access agreement between the city of Lowell and Lowell Festival Foundation relative to 375 Merrimack Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, and to execute all other documents related to this agreement.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Manager, Lee, who would like to say something about this?
Yeah. So, in honor of our return of our recycling, we are partnering with a young artist, her name is Stephanie, and she has created a wire, a ten-foot heron out of chicken wire that she fills with salvage debris from the Merrimack River and from the canals. It is a real effort to show the importance of how our trash can result in affecting the wildlife of our, of our city and of our area. We make sure that all of the festival food byproducts, all of the silverware and the paper plates, is all compostable, not just recyclable, so that we make, I think it's fourteen thousand pounds of compostable waste during the three-day festival, and that all is being saved from going to landfills. And this heron, because recycling is not able to be within the downtown footprint, the heron helps to draw attention to the efforts that the city is making and that the festival is making. It's quite a cool thing. There is a little blurb about it in the handout packet that I gave you, a message from the artist and from myself, and some photos, I think, that have been passed around as part of the application. It's quite, it's quite a striking piece.
Any other comments or questions by any of the Consulors? No, no other comments or questions? Let's take a, let's get a motion to adopt and place on the file the presentation, and also a motion to adopt the vote by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Getchea. Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Counselor Mercia? Yes.
Counselor Nun?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Roth?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now go to section three, the city clerk. 3.1 Minutes of Technology and Utilities Subcommittee, June 13th, city council regular meeting, June 27th, for acceptance by Counselor Roth, second by Counselor Robinson, all in favor of the IPOSA note, I have it. Motion is carried. We are now approaching the seven o'clock, at 6:59, close enough to seven o'clock. We now will take up We now will take up the general public hearings, 4.1, this is the ordinance on the amending zoning accessory dwelling units. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Councilors, we've been looking at this to have this completed tonight, but unfortunately, the planning board has not scheduled their hearing, so we're in the process of going to have to move this forward until the hearing is scheduled. And I believe the schedule is the 17th of July. So if it doesn't happen to be the 17th of July, we'll have to continue to move this forward. Apologize for that, but that's where both didn't coincide with the timing.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I'd like to make a motion that we vote no on this, make a motion to send this back to DPD for further review, rather than send it all the way through these hearings, because I think it's the city's job and the department's jobs to refine this, not another board to do this. I think that it should go back to DPD and back to the subcommittee and look at it, because other things have come up in the public during public discussions that are important to reviewing this whole piece and making it something that everybody in the city can live with. So I'd like to make a motion to vote no on this when it comes up. I mean, to vote to send it back to DPD.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Gishia, second by Councilor Mercier. Councilor Mercier?
I concur with Councilor Gishia, and the reason I say this, and I know we already have ADUs, and I know, I don't know if the point is trying to make them less refined, I don't know, but we had a gentleman that came up to the podium, and he spoke about ADUs and what different other surrounding communities have. Like, he said Tingsboro has this in it, and he read it. And then he said Drakett has this in it, which was different, but it was also another section. Everything that he said was so on target and so understandable, and it made sense. It wasn't a statement that you could take any way and interpret it any way. It was defined, it was right to the point, and I made a motion and asked that these things that he brought forth be put in our ordinance, and they're not. For example, you can have an in-law apartment. Well, what if your in-laws are not just your mother and your father, but the brother that you have that's living with them and you're having them in the apartment? It's, the law states that you can have one car has to be off the street, but if you have an in-law apartment with a family, with the mother, the father, and their grown son, and they all three have a car, that's one in the driveway and two on the street, I think it's not defined and pinpointed properly, and I think it leaves a lot to be desired and, you know, done in a way that you can do it. You can do it because it's not defined and it's not structured. It's not appropriate for me, and I'm not supporting this right now. I think, I made a motion, I wanted things in it that were understandable and defined, and I don't see it. So I'm not supporting it in the first place. Thank you.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be voting no on this motion. As we've talked about before on the floor, there were several meetings at the subcommittee level on this draft, and I don't agree with sending it back to DPD, because it really is the city council, whether at the subcommittee level or the full city council level, whose job it is to work on this policy. It's the DPD drafts ordinances as requested and drawn out by the city council. It's not DPD's job to go back and work on something based on what's being said in public. It really is the city council's job, and that's really what the idea of a public hearing is. We did have meetings at the subcommittee level, and I will say, there was a lot of discussion for and against, but there were no ideas brought forth at the subcommittee level in the form of a motion that was voted down or even a suggestion. Certainly, I think the subcommittee would have considered or brought forward a motion if something was suggested as a member, you know, a member of the council who wanted the subcommittee to vote on something. There was nothing brought forward since the last subcommittee meeting even. No one has suggested to me a policy change that they wanted to see here. I chaired the subcommittees, I was a sponsor of the original motion. No one has approached me with a suggested change to this ordinance in the last several weeks since the subcommittee voted to move this to the planning board. If there are changes that members of this council wish to suggest to the draft ordinance, that can certainly be done in the discussion that we have following the public portion of the hearing, whenever we receive the recommendations back from the planning board. We can certainly consider suggestions from the floor as part of the discussion if a member of this body wishes to make one. That's really the idea of discussion and debate and amendments on the floor of the council, and we can consider them and vote them up or down. So I think this has been thoroughly vetted, both here in this chamber and in public, but there's certainly nothing that's been brought forward in the idea of a policy change or an amendment to this draft ordinance that I think has been refused to be considered. So again, if there are ideas that anyone wishes to bring forward, I look forward to discussing them when this eventually does come forward for a public hearing. So I'm going to vote no on this motion, and eventually we'll follow the conclusion of that. If it doesn't prevail, move to continue the public hearing until the next city council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Gishia?
Mr. Mayor, you know, when we say it's been thoroughly vetted, that's far from the truth. We didn't have the final piece until after Councilor Drinkwater's subcommittee had already met. We got it, they've never met since this has been finalized. We went to a subcommittee led by Councilor Mercier, and there were many things that we wanted to see changed that are not in this document as Councilor Mercier outlined. All we're saying is give the public their fear due. They met for four and a half hours, and most of the time they met, it was before a council meeting where it was rushed off the end piece. DPD put this together, nobody else. This is a DPD policy that could put ordinance, that could put before us, and I'm just saying to this council, let's send it back and vet the final draft that's in front of us that we didn't see until that subcommittee was already done. Thank you.
Councilor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am not going to support the motion to send this back. The reason is, I feel like this is best discussed in a public forum, in a public hearing, which is what this, tonight was supposed to be and what it would be in two weeks. As Councilor Drinkwater mentioned, any of us can offer amendments for things that we see fit, that we'd like to see changed, based on comments from the planning board or comments from the public. And I think having an open environment like that and that discussion is really where we need to go on this. The original motion for this was filed almost a year ago. It was last August. So I take issue with the thought that this was rushed. I mean, I think we've given quite a bit of time to this, and I understand that some of my colleagues do not support this, and that's fine. That's why we're here, and if we don't support it, we can vote it down. But I do think that having the discussion in public, in a public hearing, and then having any amendments brought forward by the council is the way forward on this. So I can't support the motion to send it back to DPD at this time. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Isn't the reason you'd have a public hearing to get input and feedback from the public? If we're hearing up my colleagues on supporting the draft that's on the table, why would we bring something forward to the public that we're not even in agreement with? I think, what is the rush on this? We have a shot to do it right. Why don't we present a document to bring forward to public hearing? Because whatever we present to public hearing still is open to public hearing. That's, we're going to get input and feedback from the public, we might have to adjust again. I don't agree with some of the comments made. I specifically have asked through GIS, can we get a ballpark idea how many properties potentially could even be allowed to do this? Still haven't heard anything back on that one. I think I filed the motion on that. I've also had some concern on 4A, I, under conditions, where the accessory dwelling unit may be in a detached accessory structure that exists as of the adoption of this ordinance or which has been in existence for at least 10 years. So if you can do it as of the adoption of this ordinance, why is that 10-year piece there? If it exists while this is adopted, that means all of them are available to be done, based on what I read on this. That was another question that was raised. I wanted to know, are we allowed to include exemption for the variance process? Because as you can see, up and down, we've been having quite a bit of issues stemming from the amount of variances that have been issued in other areas. I still haven't really got a yes or no positive from that. So there have been quite a few questions raised. Anyone that's sitting here saying that we've had plenty of time? No, we haven't. As my colleague explained, four and a half hours total time spent talking about something that's going to be potentially by right change? I think we can do better than that. I think, let's try to work on a document that we feel, even if we don't support it, these questions on this level should be answered before we bring any comments and questions from the public in. If we're going to go to a public hearing on a document, we should have our answers first, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Scott?
Thank you. I would just like to echo my colleague's sentiments about sending it back. I do think that there is support possibly among us for an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I don't think this does it the way it's written right now. I agree with Councilor Robinson about not bringing it forward for a public hearing until some of it is ironed out, some of the language. I have concerns about the use of detached dwellings and how close they're going to be to neighbors' houses. Do people know that there's going to be an accessory dwelling unit now? Basically, a single-family house next door, in my opinion, is becoming a multifamily house. I don't think there's enough parking space requirements for this. I think there's already a parking, a lot of residents, I hear from outdoor knocking, talking about single-family houses that already have too many vehicles at them. I think this adds to that, and at this point, like I said, I'm also concerned about the zoning board's ability to override anything that we do. I could support personally, like language, like Chelmsford, as far as family units, which is what we've talked and heard a lot about, this helping families, you know, stay in place, caregivers, but I cannot support it as written. Thank you.
Councilor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree that the public should have input in this, and they still have input. When they go to the planning board in July 17, everyone can, if they want to, give their input on it. The planning board then would make recommendations to this council, and this council, with that recommendation, still have an opportunity to do an amendment to this ordinance. It sounds like we all agree there should be public input. Push it back to public hearing or back to DPD for, you know, more change. Change can still be made, Mr. Mayor, at the planning board, and the planning board will make those change and will incorporate the input of the public. And this council, as I said, still have an opportunity to amend, to do the amendment. So at the end of the day, we need to, because this hasn't been discussed two weeks, two months, this is over a year now. Let's get it done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments from any of the councilors? Councilor Gishia?
Just one last one, Mayor Chow. Through you to Giovanni. Giovanni, it states in here that if an applicant doesn't meet the requirements, they have the right to go for a special permit required.
I'm actually going to ask senior planner Franz Sigliano, who's been the chief author of this, to address that. Thank you.
So my question is that, we write up all of these things, we put all of these policies in place, requirements. Somebody wants to challenge it and go for a special permit. In the current policy you have, it says that they can go back to the zoning board of appeals to override everything that we wrote.
So Section 4385, special permit required, says, "In the event that the proposal cannot meet the conditions set forth in 4384, a special permit is required from the zoning board of appeals." So that subsection four, conditions, which outlines the 10-year condition, the parking, the entrance location, and the size. So those are, those four things are the things that someone would be able to request a special permit for, but the, for example, the process is subsection two. The process wouldn't, a person wouldn't be able to apply for a special permit to not apply for a permit through development services, for example. So the special permit pertains to subsection four, conditions, those four things.
Which is the major requirements to the policy. And you just referenced the 10-year piece. There really is no 10-year piece. What the language says is the accessory dwelling unit may be in an attached accessory structure that exists as of the adoption of this ordinance or, not in, it says or, or which has been in existence for at least 10 years. So it can be in one, as soon as this is put through, as long as you had one there, you don't have to have 10 years, it says it right here.
Correct.
So there really is no 10-year thing. It's just written at the end to appease somebody's mind somewhere, because the paragraph really means if you have one in existence, it's okay.
That's correct. Either it's in existence at the passing of the ordinance, or if it was not in existence as of the passing of the ordinance. So for example, if the ordinance was passed on July 1, if someone were to get all of their final inspections completed on, let's say, July 2, 10 years after July 2, 2023, so July 2, 2033, that accessory structure, which would need to comply with all of our accessory structure dimensional requirements, would be eligible after.
So what you're saying is if I build a garage in my yard, because I have enough room, I wait 10 years, and then now that becomes eligible to also have it?
Potentially, but it would also need to meet other requirements, but that's as...
So that 10-year thing really, it skews what people are really thinking, because it sounds like you had to have it for 10 years in the way it's written. My question really to you is that, so that special permit required actually can go right to the zoning board, and any condition can be waived?
Only conditions for A through D.
Which is all the conditions that are outlined in the...
But there's another subsection, which is three requirements, and those are not things that a person would be able to get a special permit for. So for example, short-term rentals is covered under subsection three. That's not something that someone could get a special permit to allow short-term rental...
That's not one of the things I'm really concerned about. I'm concerned about, as Councilor Mercier outlined, off-street parking. So in the conditions, you can waive that with a special permit from the zoning, so you don't even really need one if you can get the zoning board to pass whatever they want to pass, whenever they want to pass it. We're going through this in other areas of the zoning board, and it's sad what they're putting residents through right now. And to me, pushing this forward without going back and at least trying, can you delete that line out of there, the special permit five? Can that be taken out of there so no one can actually go for anything? It is as written, and that's the way it is?
My understanding is that residents are entitled through 40A, chapter 40A, to seek a variance to waive zoning in every city and town.
Is that your understanding, or is that state law?
That's the state law.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess that...
Residents are entitled to seek a variance, doesn't mean that they, and then it's, yeah, it's up to local review, but...
Have you seen our zoning board lately?
I staff those meetings too, so...
Yeah, I'll leave it at that. I still stick to the motion of sending it back.
Councilor Robinson?
Listening to the conversation, a couple of questions. So the special permit would be a variance through the zoning board? Those aren't two separate things, correct? The way this is written?
They are two separate things. Variances are... Variances are separate, are not the same as a special permit.
Okay, so, so could the special permit eligibility be pulled out of this document? That's not the same as a variance. You said residents have the right to go through a variance process.
Yeah, theoretically, that could be struck.
So the special permit could be struck out?
It could be struck, but a resident could petition for a variance.
And it would be the same, it would be the same as?
The process would be very similar, but the level of scrutiny for variances, variances are supposed to be more difficult to obtain than special permits. The criteria is more strict for variances compared to special permits.
So then why would we even have that special permit language in there, is my first question. Second is, again, we've been discussing putting more vehicles on public roadway. So when you convert a parking garage, a garage that you park your vehicles in, whether it's a two-car, one-car, you convert that into an ADU, you just lost off-street parking with that conversion. And then you, so you could technically lose two off-street parking spots if you converted or exist in a garage. And then also, you could get a variance or a special permit for the additional one-car requirement. So technically, you're putting, that same example I'm giving could put three additional cars on, on public roadway as a result of this. Theoretically, correct?
You could potentially, if it's qualified, convert a garage into an ADU.
And and as a result of that conversion, if it was a two-car garage, that would be two cars going on the street. And then if I got a special permit for the one-car requirement, now that's potentially three cars going on the street.
To your point, we would be screening for parking compliance for the whole property, so a property wouldn't be able to by right eliminate parking such that they become, they make themselves non-compliant with our zoning.
It doesn't reflect that in this draft, though.
Well, when we screen for, when Development Services staff screens things like this, any type of development proposal, we screen for parking compliance, so it would get flagged, and a property would not be able to by right convert a parking area that they need to be compliant with our parking requirements, they wouldn't be able to become incompliant by right. They would not be able to do that. So if, for example, a property had a really long driveway with plenty of parking, and at the end of the driveway was a qualified accessory structure that they used for parking, but they can still accommodate all of the required off-street parking for the primary residents and the ADU in that long driveway, they would be able to in that instance. But if the driveway is short, there's not enough parking spaces for the primary dwelling and the ADU, they would not be able to do it by right. Does that make sense?
But they'd be still eligible to the special permit process or the variance process?
Correct, just as any property owner currently has the right to do now under our current zoning.
And and if that's a rule that that's going to be implemented on your end when you're screening applications, why wouldn't it be reflected in the document?
Could you repeat that question?
You're saying if an application comes in and and there is, it's going to negatively impact the amount of off-street parking they can provide in order to be successful with the ADU, and that, that's, that's a process that your team looks at with the application? Why wouldn't it be reflected in the document then?
That's how we screen every development application is just, we go through the table of uses, see whether the use is allowed, see whether the parking meets the parking requirement. That's just our process for everything.
No, I, I appreciate your process, and I think it's a great process, but why wouldn't this document reflect that? That if you're gonna, if you're gonna decrease the amount of off-street parking?
We could be more explicit. It's, it's something that we do, but I agree that we could be more explicit that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel, drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was seeking to be recognized, I was actually looking to ask a question that's been answered, and and that was really whether we're sort of limited by state law, what we can restrict in this ordinance, because this has come up a number of times at subcommittee, and I don't think it's a bad idea. In fact, it's something I could support if we wanted to put in language that limited someone's ability to appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the, the conditions of the ordinance, whether it be looking for relief from, from parking, or setbacks, or size, those sorts of things. I would be open to limiting one's right to go to the, the Zoning Board of Appeals, but the, the point I was looking to, to pull out is that it's been discussed at subcommittee meetings in the past that we're essentially limited by state law. We, we have to provide a right for someone to at least appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So if there's an alternative way to somehow limit residents' ability to get, get variances to, to the conditions that are, that are set forth in here, I'd be open to amending this. Like we said, you know, when, when we take this up following, you know, a, a public hearing for a discussion and possible amendment, I just want to make sure we're not running afoul of state law and, and taking away someone's rights to an appeal before, before a land use board. So if there's another way to, to do it, to limit that, I'm certainly open to it. But we do have to, I think, understand where we're, where we're limited. And, you know, I, I do appreciate that in terms of the uses that, that are set forth in here, that we're not granting the rights for somebody to, to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and, and ask for a, a, a variance for the use of what an ADU can be used for. So again, open to ideas when we, when we come back to this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Mousia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not belabor this issue any further, but I think that this ordinance should go back to the drawing board. I want to hold off until some of the other community's best fits are added to our ordinance. Every now and then, we take a trip and we go here or there, and we see what the best of others have to offer, and we bring these ideas back into our city. And a man came before the podium, and he said the very same thing of what is good? What's happening in Tingsborough? What's happening in Drakot? What about Chelmsford? And he read word for word what, what different things that he took out of it. I thought that was a good fit for the city of Lowell. Talk about state law, this or not required, if it's, if it's allowed in Chelmsford, then it's going to downright be allowed in Lowell, as, as it is in Drakot, as it is in Tingsborough. If they can have it, I want it here, because I do not want to make this a flimsy thing and disrupt the character of any neighborhood, because we need to shove people somewhere. I'm not going to do it at the expense of a taxpayer that put their life savings in a piece of property, because this is what their neighborhood looks like, and I'm going to change it, because I want to overcrowd them or put more cars in their streets. I'm not going to do that.
If there are no more comments and questions before we, we take a vote, I do have a couple of questions of my own, one of which is just really the procedural of taking a vote on this one, having that the, the public hearing has been advertised already, and I was informed by Madam Clerk here to look at the technicality of that. With that said, I'm going to ask Madam Clerk here to please explain to the public, you know, when something's advertised already and then we have a motion on the floor, how would one vote affect the other?
So the motion on the floor is to send it back to DPD. If that fails, the ordinance comes back before the council. It has to be opened and continued, because we do not have the planning board recommendation. At the 25th of July, when this comes back before the council, would be when you could make changes and whatnot. You cannot make them now, it's already been publicly advertised, as is. So the time to make those changes or to vote no on the ordinance would be the 25th. So I, I'm just letting everybody know that.
Could I, could I just ask for just a point to the city solicitor?
Counsel Gishia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor. Mr. Solicitor, so whenever anything goes to an ordinance, we don't have the right to cancel it because it's been advertised, or if, if we do that, it sets off something else. If this passes, I, I don't care about those hearings, because they're not going to be valid, because it's going back anyway. If it doesn't pass, then it goes to those hearings anyway and comes back on the, on the next time to vote either way. So there's no issue with voting today, because if it does pass, it goes back to the city manager, and he'll send it to whatever department he feels necessary. If it fails, then we have a second bite at the apple next time and hear what the public has to say. But we're a board that's supposed to regulate based off of what's before us, before it goes to the public. And right now, it looks like we're saying we're okay with this if it goes to the public, because we've had the opportunity. So my question to you is, there's no real effect on taking a vote tonight, because it either goes back to DPD, or it goes the same way, and then we get to vote on it? So there's no harm to voting? That would be my question. Is there a harm to voting tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Solicitor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. John McKenner, Assistant City Solicitor. So what you have right now, you have a, an, a ordinance that was put on the agenda, and it would have been open for a public hearing. The requirements of the law is you have to have a planning board recommendation. Now, this is an elected body, this is the city council, this is not a board. The planning board makes a recommendation on the ordinance, whether they're in favor of it or not. The recommendation is required prior to the vote. So you have made a motion prior to any motion to continue it being made. So the motion on the floor is your motion, and it's up to the, the body, the council itself, how they want to choose to either accept the motion through the chair and vote on that motion. But with regard to the public hearing on this ordinance, this ordinance requires a recommendation from the planning board. So the recommendation from the city manager and from the, from the executive body of this legislative unit is to continue it, to allow for the proper recommendation to be heard from the planning board, and then a public hearing be held on the 25th, as stated by the clerk, at which time, after the recommendation is heard by the planning board, you can make these same motions.
So the question is, this board has the right to vote down, sending something as an ordinance, even at this time? Whether we like it or we don't?
To answer that and to interrupt you, is you do need a recommendation from the planning board on these ordinances.
Right, it won't be an ordinance.
We haven't heard the recommendation from the planning board yet.
You didn't let me finish.
I did not, I interrupted you.
Right, and that's the point. The point is, it wouldn't be an ordinance at that point, we'd have to go through the same chains again to make another ordinance if this changed anyway. So that's what we're saying at this point, is that we have the right as a body, or why do we even take votes to send something to an ordinance if we have to just say yes every time under the way you're ruling it?
No, that's not correct. So what I'm saying is you need to have the rec.
That's what you just said.
No, what I said, Counsel Gishia, was the ordinance is being brought before the body. This is the, the council who votes to make laws in these, this city. But when we have a, a zoning ordinance, you get a recommendation from the planning board. After you hear that recommendation, and you have a public meeting, and then you make your vote to either adopt the ordinance or not. But what I'm saying to you now is, you made a motion prior to hearing the recommendation to continue. There's no motion on the floor to continue it at this point, as was stated, as was stated by the assistant clerk. So your motion is on the floor. If that motion's been recognized and seconded, that's the motion that's on the floor. If that fails, it doesn't fail, then the next one would be to continue it, to have the planning board's recommendation. So you have made that motion, that motion is on the floor, whether it's correct or not.
And that's what I was asking you, since the motion's on the floor, that would carry. That's the, the point.
Counsel Gishia?
Yeah.
Okay. If you have completely answered?
No, I'm just saying, his motion is on the floor, but when you have an ordinance, you need the recommendation from the planning board prior to a vote on the ordinance.
Counsel Mousia?
So why can't we just make a motion to refer this ordinance to the planning board? And when we do that, why can't we then make a motion to send this back, this ordinance back to the DPD? How is that so difficult?
When you send it back to the planning board at the planning board hearing, the planning board can make its recommendation on the motion. Then when it comes back here, then it's on the floor, then you can make your recommendations as you do it now.
Okay, so then let's make a motion to send it to the planning board, and then after that, we'll start it over again. Can we do that?
We already have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion to refer the DPD unless you and make the motion to withdraw the original motion.
So you made the motion, what do you want to do?
Do you want to withdraw the original motion?
No, I, I think the motion's valid. All we did is make a motion not to send it to the planning board and send it back to the manager's office, and we'll redo all the advertising again if it passes. We'll just go over this again, and we'll redo the whole process again. That's all that the motion is creating, is that we'll send it back to a department to look at it, rather than go to a planning board and watch a planning board go through the same thing we're going through and send it back two weeks later. It'll speed up the process, that's the will of the council.
Okay, if you're done, Counsel Gishia, I'm going to have Madam Clerk to state again on, on the protocol, and then I feel that we have enough discussion from the members of the council. I do have one comment of my own before I do the roll call on the motion on the floor. Madam Clerk?
The ordinance had its first reading on May 16. If, if the wish of the body was not to move it forward to a public hearing, I don't understand why that wasn't voted on at that time. It was already referred to a public hearing by the city council body. So we have it, it's not on for a vote tonight, it's on to open the hearing and continue it to the 25th. We have to do that, it's been advertised, as it is. But it already had its first reading on May 16.
Yes, I'll reduce, I'll remove my second, I'm sorry. I'll remove my second and send it to the planning department. Isn't that the purpose of this meeting, this public hearing? That's what we'll do. We'll, I'll remove my second and refer this to ordinance to the planning.
If you remove your second, then we do not have a motion on the floor.
Right, I'm sorry, I have to then.
Is there any motion, is there any second to the original motion by Counsel Gishia? Second by Counsel Robinson? Madam Clerk, please make a note to amend the second to Counsel Robinson. I will take one more comment, just because Counsel Rock has not had a chance to make a comment yet.
So, and Madam Clerk is 100% correct on this. On May 16, this council voted on a roll call vote to send this to a public hearing, as is.
Counsel, before you go any further, it was, the planning board was supposed to meet June 22nd.
Correct.
I think that's where the confusing came in, because they didn't have a meeting.
Once again, you're correct, Madam Clerk, right. So this is a public hearing based on the ordinance that's in front of us. I, I think that the motion is in front of us now is not a legal one, because if, if we, the public hearing has been posted and opened, so any changes to it, it, it goes against the public hearing rules. So, you know, if you guys want to take a roll call vote on it just to do it, let's do it and get out of the way.
It's not an illegal motion, anybody can make a motion, so you would take a roll call on it, but it's not illegal, you can make, any counselor can make a motion. I'm just letting you know the procedure. If this motion fails, then the ordinance comes back before us to continue it to July 25th, the hearing.
Thank you, thank you. I move the question to Mr. Mayor.
I just want to make a, a quick comment in regards to both the motion on the floor, as well as the discussion, comments, and questions by all the members of the council. What I hear in the comments from, from every counselor is that there is some support for, for the ADU. And also, what's important, too, is that everyone respects the input of the public, which is, you know, inherent in, in a public hearing. And the vote tonight, whether you're voting for the motion on the floor, or you are voting to refer this to the zoning board, it's not a vote whether you agree to the ordinance as proposed yet. As Madam Assistant Clerk mentioned, the time to make the amendments and make the change is when the, the vote come before the, the council again on July 25th. At that time, you can either vote to adopt, you could vote not to adopt, or you could request to, to amend, to change, and to refer back as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And for me personally, as, as an elected official, I don't necessarily agree with everything that's proposed on the ordinance for tonight, but I will have the opportunity to listen at the public hearing and to. But I will have the opportunity to listen at the public hearing and to request the amendments. And also, I will open to listening to the public between now and the meeting regarding this ordinance when it comes for a vote. So tonight, I'm not gonna vote to support to refer this to DPD. I strongly believe that I should go through the process, go to the public hearing, have the recommendation, you know, from the planning board. And based on the recommendation, it doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna recommend what's in the ordinance as proposed right now. The public are welcome to go to the planning board meeting. And I'm pretty sure that after the listen to the public, they may or may not make any changes. But certainly, not everything in this ordinance tonight that I agree with. But I will follow the process of going through the planning board and I will make the request, make a comment to request a change when it comes, before the council vote on the 25th. With that said, Madam Clerk, please roll call on the vote on the floor, which is to refer to the DPD.
Counsel Yem?
No.
Mayor Chow?
No.
Counsel Drinkwater?
No.
Counsel Gitcher?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
No.
Counsel Leahy? Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Nun?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
No.
Counsel Scott?
Four yeas, five nays, and one absent.
Was it five, five yeas, Madam Clerk?
Five, five nays.
And is this a vote that's just on simple majority? This is a vote based on a simple majority. The motion on the floor failed. Now we need a motion to continue the public hearing until July 25th, 2023, at 7:00 PM by Counsel Rook, second by Counsel Yem. Any comments or questions? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just ask that when the next agenda gets published with this item on it, if the planning board doesn't meet again and it gets put off, can we please have that note in the public agenda so that people know and don't come down here to speak on something that would get moved again? Because if we knew on the 22nd that the planning board didn't meet, we should have had a note on the agenda saying that this was gonna be continued. Thank you.
Well, good, good comments. No other comments or question? Madam Clerk, please roll call. You don't need roll call. Everybody's okay? I think we got a first and a second, right? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no.
No.
Please make a note of the council say no. The yeas have it. The motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Robinson?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and take item 11.10 out of order.
Motion by Counsel Robinson to take item 11.1.
11.10.
Mr. Mayor, don't we have more public hearings?
I'm sorry?
We have more public hearings.
We do have one more. I apologize, Counselor. That was such a lengthy discussion, public hearing. I thought that was the only one. So let us just complete the public hearing first, Counselor, and then we'll go take up your motion to take item 11.10 out of order. The second item on the public hearing is 5.2, National Grid Verizon New England requests installation of additional pole on Vonnham Avenue near Fowler Road. This section is now open to all those who are in favor. Open to all those who are in favor. We don't have anybody speaking in favor. This portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Hear none. Any comments or questions on this public hearing from the council member? Hear none. Need a motion to refer to the one inspector for reporting recommendation by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Nun. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. The last public hearing is number 5.3, National Grid Verizon New England requests installation of additional pole on Vonnham Avenue near Riverview Avenue. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor. Open to all those who are in favor. Hear none. That portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. None speaking of opposition. Now that portion is closed. Any comments from any of the counselors? Counsel Gitcher?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the petitioner. I just have one question. Is it a paved sidewalk? And if so, will it still have the four-foot ADA compliance so that people can actually get by? Because some of the sidewalks, we were putting poles, it's shrinking them down so that it's not ADA compliant. So that's just my question.
Okay, please.
Good evening. The poles are to be set in grass, not on the sidewalks. So I'd...
Thank you.
...have to worry about that.
Did, I'm probably distracted a little bit. Counsel Gitcher, y'all sent? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hear none. Need a motion to refer that to the one inspector for reporting recommendation by Counsel Gitcher, second by Counsel Janess. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. I believe I missed one, Madam Clerk. Was it 5...
5.1.
5.1?
It was withdrawn by the petitioner, but I just want to state that it was withdrawn.
So there was an item for public hearing, 5.1, that was withdrawn. I don't think we need to take a vote on that one, right? Now we take Counsel Robinson. He just left. We'll wait till Counsel Robinson to come back. He did have a motion to take one item out of order. Until he returns, let's just follow the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Musia?
Counsel Robinson made a motion to suspend the rules for this 11.1. Being under suspension, I'd like to suspend the rules to bring in a motion that I think is very, very important and I hope my colleagues agree with it. And it's because of the recent tragedy of Anna Mamburu, I would like to suspend the rules to bring in a motion to establish an emergency provision. Have it made available and offered. I don't know how we can do this, but if we could come to some consensus, I'd be willing to donate money for some type of fund so that people can have a tracker to, like a bracelet or a necklace that they can wear while they're out playing or whatever. So if they wander away, there's the device that you can lock into and find out much quicker where they are. I don't know. I mean, it was very tragic. I was one of the many that went searching around the neighborhood and I couldn't even put myself in the position of the parent. So that's why I wanted to suspend the rules to bring in that motion.
A motion by Counsel Musia to suspend the rule and also to make a motion on the floor about the tracking device, second by Counsel Scott. It sounds like you explained your motion in detail already. Do you have anything else to add?
It's to establish an emergency provision if someone can't afford it. I don't know what the cost is, but I think if someone has the opportunity to look into it, to, you know, we could save lives. I saw firsthand the effort that was put in from the police department, the state police, the fire department, every public safety feature, the helicopter, the people, the police on the boats and the firefighters in the boats. And there was such an effort that I've never seen in my life. And I thought, wow, the community actually is coming together. But wouldn't it have been nice if that child had a tracking device? That we would have found that child before it hit the water? Because I will tell you, when we look at the water, we don't see it the way that an autistic child sees it. They see sparkles of the sun shining off it. They see a luring sensation that makes them drawn to this. And people probably don't understand that. But to a child, that's mesmerizing and they're drawn to the water. So being very close to the water, that's what happened. Had they had a tracker, maybe we could have saved their life before it ended in tragedy. So that's my motion. If we could have an emergency provision somewhere, that's just a thought. No.
Any other comments or questions on the motion? Counsel Gitcher?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Manager Golden. Do you know if a device like this exists?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Yes, Project Lifesaver does exist. It's something that we could do. It's a voluntary piece, but what we could do is hopefully work closer with the school department this year to try to make it something that is more readily available. So to the council's point, I think making sure that cost is not a barrier for entry on this. It could be, we could continue to research this, Counselor, not even research it, but try to see what it's gonna take to implement this idea to ensure that the interested families would be able to get this without any, you know, without any issues.
Yes, that's all I ask.
Good. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an excellent motion. We all never want to see a tragedy happen like this again. I did notice that the school department has already started putting out some emails to the community, the CSA community. Particularly, they sent one out from the 80-day school, which serves a large percentage of our CSA population, that they do have two programs for families. A SafeWatch program with the Lowell Police, where families can register their children or their loved ones so that the police have their photo, you know, any information about them so that when a search, if a search does happen, they're ready to start on day one. And they also have on here that the Lowell Police Department is piloting a program known as Project Lifesaver that provides devices free of charges, free of charge, that's like a wristband that they can provide. I mean, it does ask the parents to reach out to them. So just if we can get that out there to people, that there is a free product. It appears that the Lowell Police Department is piloting already. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Man. Through to the council. Yes, this is obviously something that we have had, but I think we need to get out more readily available for folks to understand if they have a loved one, whether older or younger, that may have this inability to get back. So that's something that we were talking to Chief Houdon about, the Superintendent Houdon about. And I believe we're trying to reach out to the new superintendent of schools as well to try to work in partnership. That's something we can definitely do better, better communicating to ensure that everyone knows there is no, there is no cost, nor should there be. There's something that we could assist with.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Counsel Robinson?
I actually had a resident reach out and send some information over to a product called AngelSense. They say it's the only GPS and voice monitor tracking created specifically for children with special needs. It attaches to their clothes with sensory-friendly accessories and can be removed without help from a parent if need be. So you have plenty of options out there. Thank you.
Say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Counsel Robinson earlier asked to suspend the rule to take motion 11.10 out of order, second by Counsel Rook. Motion 11.10 as Counsel Robinson requests city manager work with proper department to develop a proactive solution to vacancy, substance abuse, loitering issues around St. John's Church area, second by Counsel Rook again. We do have a richer speaker. Madam Clerk, please call the richer speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Jeff Astrella and I am the junior warden at St. John's Episcopal Church at 260 Gorham Street in Lowell. I've come here tonight to help support the motion from Counsel Robinson and to raise the awareness of the deteriorating conditions around St. John's Church. We used to cleaning up small articles of trash left on the sidewalk and thrown on the church property, including used hypodermic needles. Since the chain link fencing was installed in the spring around the old Superior Courthouse next to St. John's, the amount and bulk of trash left on the sidewalk and thrown on the church property has increased tremendously, including used hypodermic needles. Members of the church, including myself, have witnessed individuals defecating and urinating on the sidewalk in broad daylight. I would hope the scene I described is not what the council would like visitors to see when they come to Lowell for this year's Loke Festival. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the council tonight.
Leslie Astrella?
Leslie Astrella, also representing St. John's at 260 Gorham Street. I just want to run down a quick list of things just in the last two weeks that have been left on our property, on or around our property. A bicycle, syringes, clothing strewn about the sidewalk, some coming out of a wicker hamper that was left there as soon as the next item or the previous item, which was a hot and cold hot water heater, had been left on the sidewalk, tagged by the city, down the sidewalk a ways from us. Someone dragged it up and left it outside our back door that we had to take care of ourselves. Within a couple of hours after that, there was this hamper full of clothing that was left there. Again, we have to take care of that. I think it's just one thing after another. That's not to mention the syringes. I mean, I could, I couldn't begin to tell you the number of times syringes have been left there. Now they're dropping them in between the step and a platform to get up into our back door. They're dropping them down in there in a crack. And I think my favorite was a hatchet that was left outside our back door with a backpack that had full syringes in it with the plunger drawn back full of some sort of substance. You know, that we take something away and within hours, something is left there again. You know, we're, you know, and we have limited manpower at the church to do this. We're all working. You know, we can't be there. We don't have someone that's there all the time, so we can't continue to maintain this. There is very limited presence as far as we can see, as far in terms of foot patrols. The police, you know, they will come if we call them, but, you know, it's just becoming a very difficult situation down there. So there's so much so that in the past, I have never felt uncomfortable going down there by myself in broad daylight. I won't go by myself anymore because of the people that are in that area, the people that are sleeping on our sidewalks there. As my husband said, relieving themselves on the sidewalk and amongst, on our property in little buttresses that come out and they're little hidden areas and they're in there urinating and it's running out onto the sidewalk and they'll do it right in front of you. So, you know, I thank Counsel Robinson for bringing this to your attention.
Damon Darkangelo?
Good evening. My name is Damon and I have been with the Episcopal churches of Lowell for approximately seven years. I also help run some of the cleanup crews in the downtown area and the back central neighborhood. Solicited twice. Members of the parish have been solicited. The priest has been solicited. I myself have witnessed two live acts of prostitution on the church grounds as well. Thank you for allowing me to be here today and share these concerns with you and what I have seen in the Back Central neighborhood.
Ron Peestry?
Hi, I've seen you guys here all before. Just to remind everyone, I live at 240 Beacon Street. I want to remind everyone that this is a symptom of a much larger systemic problem, not even just in Lowell, not even just in Massachusetts. It's increasing nationwide. And so in the Lowell Sun, this was posted as we're going to increase the amount of police to result, to address this. That's not a reasonable or thorough or even adequate response to this problem. This is a systemic problem. We're going to need to look at systemic solutions. Why are people defecating in public? Because they don't have other places to go to bathroom. Why are needles being left where we are? Because we don't have a safe place for needles to be handled in the city like almost every city in Europe does. And San Francisco's done that, New York's done that. There's a bunch of places that have done things. There's policy that's good ideas here. I'm completely in favor of us being proactive in thinking, but I want us to think about more than simply increasing the number of uniformed police in a place because that's not going to fix the problem. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, no other speaker. Council Robinson?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the speakers. It's, when they reached out and I had a conversation, all the things we're hearing, we're hearing across the board in all areas of the city. I don't think they've even touched on, within the past two weeks, in the middle of a service, they had people that came in, interrupted the service, demanding money from parishioners of the church in the middle of the service. They had to stop the service and they brought the people down to Santoro's and fed them, showing compassion. As far as shops containers, I'll tell you firsthand experience. You can speak to any of our public partners in the DPW. We find shops containers completely empty in the encampments. They're scattered about. If, the number one thing I hear from people is, these people are mentally ill, they're on substances. That tells me if you're mentally ill and on substances, you don't have the brain capacity at the time to take that syringe that you just used and put it into the proper container, let alone put the cap back on, because we see evidence strewn throughout the city that there's no caps on these syringes. So as far as providing shops containers, it's another fantasy. I don't know about my colleagues, but me, myself, I am bombarded with calls from the 114, probably 900,000 residents in the city that are sick of turning a blind eye to all this stuff. Everybody wants to say it's not their fault. Well, guess what? It's not pointing fingers. It's, I think, when are we going to take a stand and say, our hand is extended? We're offering you services. We're not going to allow this kind of stuff to just fester and continue. We're not going to continue to turn a blind eye. We shouldn't have our residences repeatedly coming in here explaining to us. The manager and a colleague of mine sat and watched another property somewhere else in the city. This is getting out of control. And we're not talking about the people that fell in hard times and need to get back on their feet. There's no substance abuse issues, mental health issues, none of that stuff. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about people that are brave enough and brazen enough to get naked and defecate on private property on a church, let alone anywhere else in the city. We're talking about stashing surplus of syringes that are handed out by some of these organizations that instead of finding solutions, they're running around giving out pretty much hugs. I mean, I don't even understand. At one point in time, clean syringes was necessary to cut back on the HIV and all these other things. Nowadays, we're handing them out and I didn't know there was that much diabetes running around in the street because what's the alternative? What is the real usage for this? And it's no different than the motion I put forward. What is the point of selling glass stems? All of these things are enabling. We are giving people clothing by the boatload and guess what? It's handed out Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it's picked up by our DPW and the cycle starts again repeatedly. I mean, this is not fair. Our businesses, our residents, our organizations, they're all suffering. And while we all just look around on the ground and listen to people saying, oh, you have to just kind of allow it, or what are they supposed to do? Well, let's start with this. We have two major hospitals in our backyard. If you're on substances, substances and you're mentally ill, go get medically cleared at the hospital. Once you begin that process and take that first step, then it becomes chemical stabilization. Then you can begin to unravel whatever you're dealing with. But if you're not willing to take that first step, I myself, and a lot of what I'm hearing from the residents, we shouldn't be willing to allow you to continue the vagrant behavior that's plaguing this city. And if you're not dealing with substance abuse and you're not dealing with the mental illness and you are on hard times, there are resources available. Our career center has plenty of work. Please, we have co-op, we have outreach. Lowell is not capable of servicing the entire Northeast region by ourself. And so the longer we continue to turn a blind eye and act like this doesn't exist or listen to the excuses from a handful of people that really have no experience outside of looking, coming from a place of compassion, the worse this problem's going to get. And then the next thing we're going to be up against is the cold weather. So I think we need to really dig in and figure out, what are we going to do with this? Because I don't know about you, but I'm sick of, sick and tired of hearing these organizations that are just trying to get by and provide the service they do, have to repeatedly deal with this stuff. Thank you.
Constable Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I agree with Council Robinson. You know, Sunday, we went to a repeated house, 6264 Branch Street. The trash is worse than I saw at the top of the landfill when I worked for the Ashes and Waste. It's all over the place. We wonder why there's rats in neighborhoods. So you get out of the car and you walk over and there's three zombies and I don't care if people take that offensively or not. Three people are standing there, one's in the corner, smoking drugs. I look, I'm like, wow, so the guy's upset that we're in his yard. We've known about this. It's a known place. On June 19th, I sent over and said this, there's a restaurant right next door, people trying to survive down there. This council, including yourself, put hundreds of thousands of dollars into the Palin Plaza area, hundreds of thousand. The opera money's going down there. What are we going to do? Let's start cleaning. The problem is this, when the guy's sitting there, he's asking me, I said, oh, where are you from? He said, another state. Once somebody knows Lowell's easy to get to and they can do what they want, they're coming. They're not Lowell residents. People can sit here and say, oh, that was your neighbor, that's this one, that's this one. They're not. And if they are, I would have the same tough love to them. We need to find a way. Mr. Manager, you know, and I know, you were standing there. We watched prostitution, drugs. I have a person who works for me that lives in that neighborhood, a 15-year-old young lady who doesn't go out of her house and she has basketball net in her backyard. Who are we protecting? Who are we trying to give a better life? At some point, this council in this city has to say, you know what? I like the six people who stand up here every time, the same six people called Boston Media, the same six people out of 115,000 who are okay with it? The same six people, watch the names, watch the whole thing, and some of them are part of nonprofits and some of them are part of our schools who did the same exact thing and threw the homeless right out of their area and no one talked about that and the person works there. At some point, we have to say enough is enough and not drive by. And one of the major problems this city has is their departments don't even support their own departments. It's supposed to be teamwork. If you work in the Parks Department and you drive by something, say something to some other department. If you work in the DPW and something's going wrong, say something. Help the other department get known. Our police is supposed to drive the neighborhoods. How do they not see this? And if no one believes me, get in my car on the way out of here. We'll drive right down Branch Street and you'll see the same 10 people in that yard right now. Well, young people with their families on Sunday, all they wanted was a donut and they don't realize what they're taking their lives in their hands, getting out of that car to walk 20 feet to a donut place to get something to eat for their child on a Sunday. And we're here trying to protect people who are deviants. And maybe it's not knowingly and maybe it's other reasons why. I feel for them. I want them to do their best, but it's our job to start protecting our businesses and our residents in this city and not driving by looking the other way. I don't care if you arrest them and they go back 15 times and the judge says, don't bring him here, arrest them 20 times and get the judge upset even more. Thank you.
Any other comments? Council Rook?
Thank you, Samir. You know, this has been going on, I think since this council has been seated here and maybe the manager has been looking for a clear, concise direction from this council. I would hope that it does come right here, right now. You know, there are other cities in towns that have dealt with this, I think successfully, you know, whether it's your postings, signs all over the city, what's allowed and what's not, and then obviously the enforcement of such. You know, very rarely do people come to us with the problems, right? So when they do come to us, it really means something and it's something that really forces them to reach out and to ask for assistance. You know, and whether it's a roll call vote in general, but this really does have to end here and now. You know, suggestions have been made, you know, and we can definitely share what we have dealt with, seen and then dealt with, but I really think this council needs to give a direct, clear, concise message to the manager and his team of what we expect. You know, no hem and no hawing. I mean, the time is now and Council Robinson stayed before when the weather comes and it gets colder. I mean, it's just, it's, it really, I think one of the city's best days was clearing out that camp last week. You know, it's time to stop making it a regular occurrence. Help is offered every single day and is denied every single day. We talked to our homeless director, we talked to our health director. Has anybody ever taken them up on assistance? And the answer was no. Those people that want help, they're very proactive and they go above and beyond to seek it. You know, we need to really, I believe, you know, as a council, direct the manager to deal with this problem and to end it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions on this motion? Hearing none. On favor say aye. Post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We're on the suspension of the rule path, I guess. Anyone else want to ask for a suspension of the rule? Council Janess?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that there are speakers here for my motions 11.14 and 11.15. If we're going to take 11.15, I'd like to bundle that with Council Gishia's motion, 11.2, it's the same motion. So, thank you.
So there's speakers here at 11.14 and 11.15. Counselor? And what was the other motion?
11.2 is basically the same motion as 11.5.
Okay. 11.2, give me a second. And motion 11.2 and motion 11.5 are pretty much the same, is that what you're saying, Council Janess?
11.2 and 11.15, yes.
11.2, 11.15, 11.2, okay. So a motion by Council Janess to take item 11.14 and 11.15 out of order. Notice 11.2 and 11.15 are the same, right? So we'll take 11.15 and 11.2, so combine them, abandon them, second by Council Robinson, and to take the combined motion and 11.14 out of order, also second by Council Robinson. Let's start with motion 11.14 first then, right? Motion 11.14, Council Janess requests city manager have the Lowell Police Department increase foot and car patrols in the Back Central neighborhood, second by Councilor Scott. Do we have a roach speaker on this? Madam Clerk?
Attorney Stephanie Mello?
Thank you for having me here today. I'm a little short. I'm Attorney Stephanie Mello. I'm the owner, co-owner of the Mello Law Offices. Don't tell my brother I just said I was the owner. Down on 491 Denton Street, we used to be at 175 Central Street Downtown, but we moved due to the homelessness. I also represent Citywide Properties, who owns, who owned two properties on Union Street, nine and 13 Union Street. I consider myself to be an active member of the Portuguese community in Lowell. I was told that on July 1st, State Representative Vina Howard and the Lowell litter crew were cleaning up near the Portuguese American Center on Charles Street. So I decided to join them that day. What we found is what everyone's been talking about, what you expect to find, human excrement, needles, people sleeping in abandoned lots, mattresses, anything that you can think of. When I was cleaning the vacant lot at 32 Union Street, I thought to myself, who owns this? So I went on the registry of deeds and I found out that the city had acquired the property in September of 2022 and had done nothing to secure it. So I'm here to speak in favor of erecting a fence to secure the property, but I'd like to go on to say that that's just a short-term solution. What I hear today is that nobody has the answer. If nobody has the answer, we need to find the answer. We need to work with state, federal agencies, we need to hire a consultant, we need to apply for grants. This is getting out of control. The homelessness in the city, the drug use, the mental health crisis, the homeless crisis, the housing crisis, the financial instability in the city is getting out of control and the people that live here and the people that work here can't enjoy their lives and can't run their businesses because of it. The building that the Mello Law Offices was in for almost 20 years could no longer be our office because we could no longer have our clients stepping over human excrements, stepping over needles to come see their attorneys. It wasn't a good look for us. We had to move to a more secure building. So I can imagine now, three years later, we moved in 2020, what the business owners in downtown are dealing with. I looked online, I know that two months ago, the city council had declared homelessness a public health crisis. So I looked online to see what had been done since then and I could not find anything. I saw that in 2008, there was a 10-year plan to combat homelessness. I saw in 2019, there was a homelessness task force established and I couldn't find anything beyond that. So erecting a fence, great, that's a short-term solution. Moving a mobile command center, great, short-term solution. Having more patrol cars, great, short-term solution. This is a systemic problem. These short-term solutions are just that, they're short-term solutions. And the citizens of the city, the business owners in this city, need long-term solutions and we need our politicians to provide those for us. So whether, again, it's hiring a consultant, partnering with state and federal agencies, something needs to be done other than all of these short-term solutions that are being presented here today. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, any other speaker?
No.
Okay. Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everyone who came down and spoke tonight. Obviously, Back Central is a big topic tonight. Seven of the 16 councilor motions have to do with issues in Back Central that are all interrelated. And as one of the speakers mentioned, this is, or a couple, this is a systemic issue. This is why we've been asking for a summit for partnerships with the state government, with the federal government. We've been asking for these answers. We've been asking for these efforts. So, Mr. Manager, I think at this point, I'd like to make a motion that... So, Mr. Manager, I think at this point, I'd like to make a motion that at the next meeting, we get an update on where we are with all our various homeless things, unless you want to jump on that right now. I will speak specifically just to the request for the increase in the police presence. This is not an effort by me or anyone else to arrest our way out of this problem, to, you know, sweep things under the rug. What this is, is a request for the police department to increase their partnership with the neighborhood. I had a neighbor call me and tell me a story that I've relayed to the manager and the police chief. I will refrain from mentioning it in public because I know it's an active investigation. But there are issues there and the neighborhood needs help. And the neighborhood is asking for the police to be more involved. So if we can respond to that concern, and yes, this is a short-term solution, but it's a step that needs to be taken while we're working on these longer-term solutions. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn, sorry, Mr. Manager, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Counselor Gitcher, you have your hands up?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. And I agree with Attorney Mello that, you know, we have major issues and I think the council has been trying extremely hard at coming up with solutions as, you know, Counsel Robinson and I had made a motion to look for beds in the area, to try to look for properties that we could do this. When we have a social service network that is mostly in downtown and we're bringing people down there, that's how we filled these vacancies back in the days that downtown was going the way it was going. There's more social services down there, so that's where people are gonna come. And if you're giving out all of these needles and everything, that's where they're gonna go. It's just, that's the facts of life. But how do we get to the next stage? Okay, we started providing. Now how do we get to the solution where we're gonna give them outs? Because as people have said, when, you know, there's different reasons why people are there and one size doesn't fit all. So how do we get to that solution? And I think that's what the manager has been working on and, you know, he hasn't been here that long enough to say, "Okay, here's a solution, here's the place, we're gonna put them all in here." There is nobody who wants this solution more than this council. We're sending more resources from our street department, our DPW, to our Parks Department and everything else around us is falling down because we have to keep going out and picking up after people, the trash that it's costing us, all these things that are going on. And people want more and more. Well, the residents can't afford more and more. We have to find a solution. So I do agree with Attorney Mello that we have to continue to push and, you know, maybe the homeless commission needs to be put back together and we've been active at trying to do that, so. I thank her for coming here and spending her time here because she also had called on the next motion and I think that, you know, people do care, that 32 Union Street. Mr. Manager, is that on the yard sale, that 32 Union Street?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council, and I want to say thank you very much to the folks for coming out here today. In regards to 32 Union Street, that has been something that we've brought forward on a needs assessment. So this is the order of operations that we need to go through on the needs assessment to ensure that, I'll say, DPW doesn't need that land or anybody else here. After that happens, we would come back to the council, I believe, and have a surplus, looking to our land use expert over in the lot department. But the, at that point in time, we would have the council declare a surplus. From there, we would make it housing, because it is large enough for housing, could be off-street parking. For the neighborhood, it could be almost anything that the council desires. So when it comes to 32 Union Street, we have been moving in that direction and it is correct. We just purchased this, give it takes, eight months ago, I think? Eight months ago, I stand corrected. So that's where we are with 32 Union Street. And also, to the folks who were here from St. John's, I would hope that you've seen a little bit of a change. I know that we've put a big effort over in Jay's where we stepped up enforcement. I personally have been out there myself to see a vehicle, a police vehicle parked out there and to be moving people along. I have actually noticed that difference in the past two weeks and that's something that you should be seeing. I am very familiar and I was sharing with my colleagues exactly the location because I've driven by your location there. We've had issues over on Gorham Street, hence you'll see the fence around Superior Court. So I can tell you that, and it's really coming from this council as a whole, talking to us and saying, "Here are the issues." So the food store itself has been an issue that we are dealing with. 32 Union Street, to the attorney's point, will be moving forward. That is something that we have previously been working with. And per the council's request, setting up this housing summit has been ongoing. I've had meetings with the NEMCOG managers throughout the greater Lowell area and the council will be invited coming days, I believe. We're putting the finishing dates and times on this homeless summit that I believe was brought up by multiple councilors. As I'm looking around, I don't, I tend not to give one name because many have you talked about it. The elected officials in this area will hopefully come and join us to say what will be the, their idea. We've talked to the secretary, the new secretaries that have been coming in. We anticipate the state coming in to have this discussion, to try to find out what can happen. So the summit has taken place and it should be in your inbox, I would think, before the end of this week on date and time, and hopefully you could attend. But you can be assured that the city will be there as well as, we're hoping, other attendees throughout the NEMCOG area, which would be the contiguous cities and towns, to see what this, what the elected officials could move forward on. So those issues are just a few that have been happening. As you know, I tend not to try to answer these, but we have so many people here, I just want them to know, this has not gone on deaf ears. We are in the process of moving forward. And I truly do hope the folks over at St. John's have seen a little bit of a change because I was out there last Saturday, I believe it was, and somebody gave the date when Lowell Litter Crew was out there cleaning up. If it wasn't last night, it was the Saturday before, I apologize. So they were doing a lot of work out there and that is not something that we take lightly. We thank our partners over there and that has probably been the third or fourth time that that has been cleaned, either by DPW and the Lowell Litter Crew as a whole. We are, we are hopefully making a difference in that area and we've recognized it and it's because of this city council that has continued to make that call. So I thank all the councilors from the homeless summit. Stay tuned, this is happening within the next probably four to five weeks. The NEMCOG meetings as well, as well as the 32 Union and the food mart, which I hope that you've seen a difference because I can tell you I have. And I've also been there at different times when the vehicle, when a LPD vehicle is not there, so I want to commend them for doing that. And the housing, the housing substation is now up and running there. So I'm seeing a little bit of a difference, but there are times when I go over there and if we do not have somebody standing there or at a sentry position, you'll see four or five people congregate. But thus far, I haven't seen the 15 to 20 that was there previously. And I'd always stand corrected and you can always feel free to give us a buzz. We'll make sure that that doesn't happen. And that's not just in that location, that's in locations throughout the city. There are a couple of other, I would say, spots that we need to concentrate on as well.
Any more comments on, actually, on the Back Central before we go further on the Union Street?
Mr. Manager?
Counselor Gitcher, I think...
I think I had the floor. He was answering something that I asked him.
You got a second one? Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Mr. Manager, we asked it one time that a police precinct be over there. Is there a police precinct in there? Because we were looking for it to be visible in the area so that, and I do agree with the previous speaker that arresting your way out of it isn't the answer, but just foot patrol and everything that this says. But did we ever get the police precinct over there? And what are the hours?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. That's over at the Lowell Housing Authority. That has, I can get you the hours, but if you do see a vehicle parked out front, we're actually in the process of helping them get some parking as well. But that is over in the Lowell Housing Authority.
I thought at the time we asked the question not to put it in there, but to put it into like a business area, so it was like the one incentive, so that would be actually, you could see it and, you know, it had more of a presence. But I guess Lowell Housing must have wanted more presence over there also. And it was cheaper.
Mr. Manager?
That, correct, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. That was something that was put together by the Lowell Housing Authority and they were very gracious in the rent, which was not much.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Noon and Counselor Scott, you had your hands up earlier. Is it on Back Central or on the Union Street? I didn't read the motion on Union Street, that's why. Any more comments on Back Central?
Either one of those, Mr. Mayor. I just want to respond in general. You know, I know that we, the city council, hear the concern and share the frustration of the resident with regard to these issues, either Back Centrals or elsewhere in the city of Lowell. It was yesterday issues and it's not gonna go away, it's getting bigger. Counselor Gitcher talking about Branch Street, you know, next to the Kim Donut and so many other areas sprinkling into the neighborhood as we speak. I think, you know, I know that the manager spoke of the summit that he and his team put together around these issues. We had this summit in 2019. We need to build on it, we need to bring all the partner and all the resources because, you know, pointing, you know, say, "Your job or your job, it's not mine," this is not gonna go away. All resources should be put together with the directions of the manager. With this direction from this council and you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Managers will have it together, both short-term and long-term in term of addressing this and bring all the partners and all the resources that we have because, again, this is not gonna go away. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Counselor. I just want to correct a missed statement from me a moment ago. The council did vote for a surplus. Now the needs assessment, the RFP, and then the council will vote again. And that's in regards to 32 Union Street. So I brought the needs assessment before the actual surplus. So that's, once again, surplus has been voted on by the city council. Thank you very much for catching that. The needs assessment is currently going on and RFP would be put forth to find out what it is we want to do with a 32 Union Street or any other land that we currently own. And then, of course, the council would vote on that if they think it's something to go in that direction. So, just a correction.
Counselor Scott, do you have a comment on Back Central?
Yes, please. My, first I'd start off by thanking Counselor Janess for making this motion. Counselor Janess and I both cover part of Back Central as our district and we attend the neighborhood meetings there. And we hear constantly about prostitution, drug activity, theft in the area. And the one thing that is consistently mentioned is the lack of foot or they've asked for bicycle patrols. I think we have to listen to the neighbors, what they're asking for. And I think, you know, I would just echo that sentiment, that we really need to see people out in that neighborhood. I have the pleasure of covering three districts. The crime report is excessively large compared to the other two districts that I cover. There's certainly a problem there. I will say Jay's Food Store, the last couple of weeks I've been driving by, there has been an officer parked there. There's definitely been an increase in presence and I would thank the police department for that. That would be all. Thank you.
Any other comments on Back Central? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, this has been the area of the keep. I keep hearing, we're blending things together here and I think that that's a first step. I think we're referring to this as unhoused. People may be unhoused that are doing this, but let's talk about one component of this and this is something, and it's short-term. Crime is crime. Prostitution is illegal. Smoking crack in public is illegal. Standing around loitering in a private space, dealing drugs, it's illegal. Frequent drug use out in the public's view, it's illegal. Defecating in public, it's illegal. That's where the crime needs to be addressed. People say, "I'm not trying to wrest out of this." That's not what we're talking about here. Being unhoused is one thing. We're not even talking about that right now. We're talking about all of these criminal components that we see every day. The whole community sees it, but some choose to turn a blind eye. I think we need to attack this. We're sending a message loud and clear throughout the Merrimack Valley and this Back Central area is a perfect example. We're putting on display that, run wild. We're not gonna do anything anyway, so, and the numbers grow. Growing up in Lowell, the people that had problems with substance abuse, they hidden did this stuff because they knew even something as stupid as a crack pipe got them arrested. The police at the time sent a message that it wasn't gonna be tolerated. It seems like we're sending a message at this time that have at it because we're gonna get people complaining at us or we're scared to take a step. I think it was mentioned earlier. I don't care if people continuously want to choose to break the law and they have 30 arrests for small petty crimes related to breaking into cars, prostitution, public nudity, defecating in public. I don't care. Those are all crimes. If they have 30 arrests in six months, so be it because then the conversation begins with the judges. What are you doing to our community by keep repeatedly, stick putting these people out? Hopefully, it won't get to that point with a lot of people. But until we send a message that we're not gonna continue to turn a blind eye at places like Jay's Food Store, at dark areas that they congregate behind churches, at Summer Street area where it's the Wild West, we have kids taking swim class lessons in the morning and we have 50 people on the hill by noon time that can barely stand up. We need to send a message loud and clear that the criminal component of all of this is not gonna be tolerated. While we work on these long-term solutions, while we work on these summits, while we start working to provide different kind of housing options, while we bring the state in that can provide additional beds because there's a shortage statewide for the mental illness components, but you can't even get into a bed to begin to address it until you take that first step in detox. If people are refusing, if our hands extended repeatedly and offering help, offering help, offering help, if they continuously smack that hand away, I think enough's enough. And by allowing these encampments to thrive, what's going on now is that you're seeing drug dealers offloading material to people in the encampments, they have a captive audience, and guess what? It festers. And hey, this new encampment is, has this stuff, you're getting an influx of people. I don't know where all of these faces are coming from, but I've been here for 45 years. Half of the people that I'm seeing out and about performing these crimes, the prostitution, the drug use in wide-open public, the defecate, all of these crimes, I'm not talking about the unhoused, the crimes, the people breaking the law with these matters, they're not from Lowell. And if people want to sit there and try to say, "Yes, they are," I've seen a group of seven people come with three-year-old Boston Red Sox clothes that must have been donated while they were in Boston, but now they're here. And guess where they are? The Summer Street Back Central area. I think our law enforcement is gonna have to come together and really say enough is enough and send that message to the people that are blatant enough to break the law and continue with these crimes. This is no way pointing the finger at people that are unhoused looking for help. These are different group of, of subcategory of the unhoused. These are the people that are blatant about law is not for them. Well, guess what? That behavior and that attitude should not be allowed to fester in our city any longer. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions on the Central motions? I know there's a motion on the floor by Counselor Janess as well. Counselor Mosier?
Thank you. Everything that Counselor Robinson said is exactly true. Perception is the key here. If there's a perception that they're not gonna take this in Lowell, you'll get the word out and people won't come here. But I'm just saying that it has to start in the courts. The judges in the courts are saying, "Don't," to the lawyers, "Don't tie up my courts with all this reveal things." And then people aren't bringing them, so they're committing all these minor crimes, they're doing all this illegal stuff because it's not that serious enough and it's tying up the courts. And that's the message and that's the perception. We'll do whatever we want because when we go to court, the judge don't want to hear it anyway. This is a fact. I'm telling you the truth. This is what's happening. We need people that are accountable. See, I know I'm gonna get in trouble for this, I really don't care, but we need judges today that are voted in. We don't need them to be there and appointed and they're there for life and they have an attitude like, "Well, not in my court, don't tie up my court with this." Do your job. Form a system whereby someone commits a minor crime, a robbery, it's a minor crime until your vehicle is ransacked and ripped apart and destroyed. Then it becomes a real crime. But when someone's car is broken into, people are going in stores and just... But when someone's car is broken into, people are going in stores and just walking out with merchandise, who's paying for that? We're paying for that when we go and buy something that cost an X number of dollars, but now it's costing more because they got to compensate for those that are walking out with the stuff. The judges should say, "You want to come to my court? You want to do this? You're going to clean the streets." The very people that are destroying the streets and making the streets filthy are the ones that should be cleaning it. Therefore, if you take pride in knowing that you did all this work to clean it, you'll respect it a lot better. There's no respect here. They're not made to do anything. Even your children, you have to tell them, you can't just do that, you got to set rules. But we're not doing it to the very people that are destroying our city and that's what they're doing. There's a lot more that I could say, I'm not going to, but Corey Robinson's on the right track. We need to find solutions to have this filth stop. And when I say filth, our city's getting dirty because there's so much, you give them clothes, the next day you see it thrown all over the streets. It's garbage and trash and it's becoming unsightly and it's frustrating to see it. People that spoke behind me from St. John's Church, absolutely, that's frustration. I don't want to step over feces or whatever. Businesses have to close down and move somewhere across the city? That's not right. So I see all the frustration that's taken place. There are solutions. We got to be stricter, we got to work together, we got to demand respect for our cities, for our streets, for the cleanliness. I don't certainly want rats in my neighborhood, but that's what's happening. So we got to do something. We can't just talk about it, we have to do more than that. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Nunez?
Counselor Musia is correct and when we say that we have all the resource and the partner, that's include the judge. I think if we have a meeting around these issues, a monthly meeting, bring the presiding judge in Lowell District Court to the table because he or she too want to be a solution. So that's how we do it, partner. That's not leave anybody out of this. Everyone can be a partner in solving, in addressing this issue, short and long term. So let's get to it.
Okay, no other comments on the favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Robinson?
I just have a quick question, through you to the solicitor maybe, or Mr. Manager. One of the things that we've discussed in Back, this is still Back Central, Jay's Food Store, I'm not sure how the Lowell housing property a little further up over by, across from Superior is classified. Are there ways that we, or path, that we could strengthen ordinance for criminal activity within so many feet of, say, elderly housing or public housing, something along those lines? So that way, for the people that are choosing to deal drugs out of, say, the Jay's Food Store area or if it's within so many feet, it'll actually give law enforcement something that they can use. And I'm talking for the traffic and all, those kind of, you know, obviously felonies. So when someone's delivering the stuff down to the people doing the street level and they get caught within that zone, is there a way the city ourselves could create ordinance within those kind of areas?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John McKenna, Assistant City Solicitor. So you already have criminal codes that have like school zone cases and things like that and the criminal statutes is set by mass statute through the state law, through the legislature. With regards to ordinance that the city creates, there's more fines and things like that that go to, you know, trying to modify behavior and curtail certain behavior that happens. But with regards to the criminal code, that comes from the state statute and you have, like, you already have like school zone cases is a perfect example of the things you're talking about. But certainly it could be looked into and, you know, lobbied to have certain areas.
So I understand that.
Use of vagancy laws and things like that.
So I understand about the school zone. I'm saying, is there a path for this council and this administration, if we wanted to say, maybe that's what it is, petition the state to look at expanding in Lowell for elderly housing zones or something along those lines?
You know, the city can always petition for home rule legislation, where certain legislations apply specifically to the city. I mean, that's certainly one option, but, you know, you can look into other options and, you know, proceed forward. Certainly can make the motion as you have done here and move it forward and we can look into it and get you more information on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on Back Central? Here none on favor, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry.
Mr. Mayor? You had mentioned the motion I made in our discussions earlier and then?
You had a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
To get the report on the home summit for next meeting?
Basically all the longer term, just an update on all the longer term homelessness efforts being undertaken by the administration.
Madam Clerk, you have the entire?
Mr. Mayor, there's actually a motion, motion number, I believe it's on tonight's agenda, Counselor Scott and myself.
Eleven. Eleven.
Eleven, eleven. We're seeking an update on the housing summit, so.
Okay. So can we, Counselor Janess, you had the motion on the floor, would it be, and to the maker's motion on the agenda, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Scott, would you three be to combine the motion on the floor with this council?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, motion, let's, let me deal with eleven point eleven next then, so it's easier to amend that.
I withdraw the motion on the floor, we'll deal with it when we get to eleven eleven.
Okay. Wonderful. We now go through the bundle motion, which was eleven point two and eleven point one five. Eleven point two, Counselor Gishia, request city manager have property department secure the property at 32 Union Street. Motion eleven point one five, Counselor Janess, request city manager provide update on the requested fencing at the city-owned lot at 32 Union Street. Both, the bundle motion is seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Any comments or questions on these two motions? Counselor Janess?
I think there's a registered speaker.
Madam Clerk, is there a registered speaker on this one?
Attorney Stephanie Mello.
Attorney, do you want to add anything else? Are you okay with that? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was mentioned by the speaker, this came up as a result of Lowell Litter Crew going out there and cleaning up again. After the last time they were out there cleaning up, there was a discussion on the floor and the request was made at that time for the city to put a fence around the property or secure it in some way. And so I'm just kind of looking for an update with where we are at with that request. I understand that longer term, you know, the disposition of the property will change. But, you know, we've required DCAM to secure their properties, we've required other construction areas to secure their property. So I think, you know, if we could put a construction fence around or do something just to keep it in some state of cleanliness, that would be a good thing in the short term.
Any other comments? Counselor Gishia?
Through you to the manager, I know that you said that it's in the part of the yard sale piece. Do you know where we are on that property and what the estimated timeframe is for it to be either sold off or put on a condition and what the city would do with it?
Mr. Manager?
Well, once again, the surplus was voted on, the assessment is out for 14 days and then the RFP would be for 30 days, three zero. So that could be, this is conceivably, we could be dealing with this sale in the next, Counsel? In the next two months.
Yeah, depending on the size of the property, the yard sale properties are typically less than 5,000 square feet. Depending if it's, you know, something that the needs assessment would determine whether or not it's a small lot, whether it's better for off-street park and decreased density in the area and be sold to the immediate abutters. Through a yard sale process, if it's under 5,000 square feet. If it's a large parcel, then we sold off under a request for proposals onto a particular type of development. So again, we have, the new asset manager started, he's been on for a couple of months now, George Polaris, I think his name is, and he's doing a good job, he's starting long. So we're meeting on these properties, trying to get these properties that are city-owned, find out what the best use is for them, whether it's a city use for them or is it used for the neighborhood and then send it out the proper request for proposals at that time. So as the manager said, I believe the needs assessment is in the process now and then it'll be determined what the best use of it would be and then it'll be sent out for requests for proposals for development or if it's a yard sale, if it's a small parcel.
So if it's in the worst place, the RFP process, how long would that take from the stage it's in now to the RFP process to gone? Is that a six-month process, eight-month process, two-week? I know it's obviously not two-week process because I just saw that it was two months. If it's the small end, but if it's the big end, then how long would the RFP, in your opinion? And I'm not holding you to it, but I'm just wondering what the timeframe would be.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I can take that. John McKenna, it depends on what proposal you're looking for. If it's a detailed proposal and there's multiple bids and then you have analysis of those proposals, it takes a little longer. If it's a straightforward proposal to sell it off to decreased density in the area, then it takes a little less time. This particular parcel, when we get the needs assessment back, we'll know exactly what type of use is recommended, it'll come to the council, make a recommendation. I would think within a, I think George is already working on this one, it's obviously gotten a lot of attention, so I think maybe 30 days or so. I'm not sure exactly what the size of it is, but I would say it'd be rather quick. I don't think it'd be six months.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the two bundle motions? Here none on favor, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We're still on the suspension of rules mode, any other request to suspend a rule, take any item of order? Counselor Robinson?
Do we have any more registered speakers? Through you to the clerk.
Madam Clerk, any items that has registered speaker? Any other items? There's no other one here in the chamber who's registered, wants to speak. All right, let's go back to the agenda where we left off. That would be, this would be section six. These are the communication from the city manager and these are the motion responses. We have five motion responses tonight. We start with the alphabet A, communication translation. Counselor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Managers and your team for the report. To start, I think I like the idea that having the greeter, you know, at the front desk down in the basement, having iPad and the ability to do Google translation to help the visitor, that is a start. And also, I think going forward, you're looking to ensure or looking for vendor, right, to, this is important, that way to ensure that our resident receiving, you know, information from the city is that is important information. I also like the suggestion as well because Lee from the Folk Festival Foundation has mentioned the other group that really need this as well as Portuguese community, not just in Spanish and, you know, Kamai and so add Portuguese language to it will be of importance. You want the community to feel that, you know, important information, they can have it or they're able to share it among their particular group. So as soon as you have the vendors, you could report it to, you know, council as to where you add on it and what's the cost associated with it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? Counselor Yan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some comment from the residents regarding the Kamai translation and I personally was a court translator in my previous life, so I understand and I see, you know, the translation is not correct or sometimes it doesn't convey the same message. Certain translation, also a Google translating, is completely non, it just look Cambodian character, but it's not a word that was translated. And here's from the report, I can see that the city have to go through the vendor that is approved by the state. So my request tonight, if possible, maybe the city can work with CMIA for the Kamai translation and help CMIA to be approved vendor with the state so that they can provide the accurate translation. We accomplish two things, get the accurate translation and also providing job for our local organization as well. So that would be my request. We can do the same thing with other languages, Portuguese, they have Massachusetts Portuguese Association, so they can also provide and they can, the city can help them to be the state vendor, so we can use that, them for the city translation. So that's just my comment and thank you for the report.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments on this motion response? Here none. Counselor Rook?
I apologize for not speaking up earlier. Would you have one member of the public here on nine point one?
Okay, motion by Counselor Rook to take item nine point one out of order, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Nine point one is a report from the White Inspector, five point one, Wave Guide on behalf First Light Fiber Conduit at Appleton Street. Two, Boston Gas DPA National Grid Concrete Pad Bradley. Three, Boston Gas DPA National Grid Relay Plastic Gas Main Vonnam Avenue. Four, Comcast Conduit Lakeview Avenue. Five, Comcast Conduit and Manhole on Cook Street. Might I start?
Jay Dunn from Wave Guide on behalf of First Light Fiber for the conduit on Appleton Street, just looking for the final approval on that.
Any comments or questions by any of the council member? Okay, here none. Need a motion to accept and adopt the accompanying orders by Counselor Yan, seconded by Counselor Nunez on favor, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Thank you. We now go back to where we left off again on the motion responses. We now go to motion response B, appeals process and formation. Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Under the, thank you for the report, Manager Golden. Under the statute of limitations, I just, I wondered this question. Under A, it says the time limit to file an appeal is 20 days after the decision is granted, authority has been filed in the office of the clerk. So what time after the ruling of the board? How long does it take to get to the clerk's office? Because then it's 20 days from that point. So that's the way I'm looking at it, so does it?
Through the manager to?
From when the ruling is to get to the clerk?
So John McKenna from Law Department? So with regards to the decision, it's the date the decision is received by the clerk. So if you have a decision in the planning board or if you have a board appeals decision, they vote on the decision, the decision is signed and delivered to the clerk. From that date, it's received, they have 20 days to file a complaint at the Superior Court. You file the complaint at the Superior Courts and you agree by that decision and then you take a copy of that and bring it back to the clerk's office. That's just how the statute provides for an appeal.
I guess I'll have to ask the clerk, how long does it take after a board hearing their decision to get to you?
That I couldn't tell you. When it comes in, we timestamp it in. I don't know what their process is.
I guess we can go to EPD Director.
Staff have 14 days after the vote has been taken by a board. They have 14 days to file that decision with the clerk's office.
So currently, what's the timeframe it normally takes? Does it take right up to the 14th day and then it's 20 days after that?
Sometimes. It depends on how many projects we've had, how many decisions are made. Right now, while we're learning this new system that we're operating in, I think it is taking people a bit longer, but they have to have it by the 14th day into the clerk's office.
So a resident who has a ruling against them has to call the clerk's office for 14 days, so we take up a whole staff of 14 days, up to 14 days. A person will call and ask the clerk's office, "Did you receive this yet? Did you receive this yet? Did you receive this yet?" And then, once they receive it, it's the 20 days after that, obviously.
And that same person could just call Development Services and get an update on when staff will have that filed.
Is that?
And that is something that the staff would be able to provide them information on.
Is that something on the website that tells them? Is that something on the website that tells them they can call you instead of the clerks? Because here it says, once it gets to the clerk. So I would assume if we put this online, that they're going to call the clerk's office and ask them. It doesn't say, or you can call here to...
We can clarify something on the website. Generally speaking, people tend to start with Development Services for most of these questions, but we can clarify that more.
I'm asking these questions because of a ruling that's going to come very soon and the residents are asking about this and they really want to know, what is the outline? When this board rules against us to get it to the proper? They don't want to miss a day of filing. So that's all I'm asking is. So once the board rules, it's fourteen days from there and then, once it gets to the clerk, it's twenty days from there. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Hearing none. We now move to the next motion response, alphabet C, which is on street trees. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I just think to say thanks to everybody that put this report together. There's a lot of information in there. Thank you to Nimco for working with us. I didn't realize it was such an involved process to get, to throw street block parties. I mean, who would have thought? But I'm just glad to see that it's in the works. So obviously, well, I can't say obviously, but is there any shot that we would be able to run a pilot before winter hits based on this timeline and scope of work?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Rocha. Ms. Carter instead. Mr. Manager?
Good evening. We're aiming for that. So the timeframe for the pilot intervention, like where we'd close a segment of the streets, is anytime in the scope of work between August and October. We're still doing traffic counts. We've interviewed Butters, we've gone to the Little Downtown Neighborhood Association, we have surveys out to business owners and residents. So we have to collect all that data before we sort of narrow down where we're going to close and then program what we're going to do. So the goal is, realistically, it's probably more like the October side of that, but we want to do it this fall.
Thank you very much. And maybe it looks like an Oktoberfest might be back, huh? Thank you, though, I appreciate that.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank everyone that worked on this response. There's a lot of good information here and, you know, I guess I'll get my lederhosen ready. So I just want to offer one point, which is, I don't want us to be shy here. I want us to swing for the fences on this one. And that said, I think it's worth noting that many other cities have seen great success and significant economic development by closing some of their major streets, right? I don't want to see us take a chance on this and then say, ah, it didn't work and never look at it again. If we can close a block of Merrimack, block of Market, probably not both at the same time, but if we do one of those and, you know, it could lead to activation of storefronts that have been empty. It could lead to opportunities that we aren't even considering. So I think putting ourselves in a box of Middle, Shattuck and Palmer might not get there. So if there's an opportunity here to really swing for the fences, I'm going to support that. And I just wanted to, wanted to put that out there and just put it on the radar. But thank you for your efforts on it and I look forward to, you know, supporting this effort, no matter how it looks. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Real quick, I'd just like to echo my colleague. I read a study recently, there was a section of Montreal that was kind of facing somewhat what we're facing in our downtown. They had like a fourteen and a half percent vacancy in a smaller business district of the neighborhood. And by pretty much pedestrianizing it through programs like this and bringing in the foot traffic and, within a year's time, they reduced that fourteen and a half percent of vacancies to five percent. Because they were able to secure loans because there was an increase of disposable income and the foot traffic numbers went way up. So I think this has a lot of potential to help some areas that we really need help in. Thank you.
Counsel Yan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo my colleagues the same thing. In Burlington, Vermont, there's a church street marketplace and made me think, when we were there, I think of Merrimack Street. So we close off Merrimack Street where Dutton Street is and then, you know, all the way to John Street Garage. That's what they did over there. They blocked the whole area and become open markets and then the restaurant and all of that will flourish. And they have activities every day for during the summertime. They have a lot of act on the street that come in from all over and they continue to do this on a regular basis where people would sell stuff and then the restaurant serve all the tourists and all. So my thought is similar, if we could maybe try that and then, and help the local restaurant. I know the mayor likes the idea, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Thank you for being here, Ms. Carter. We go to the next motion response, which is the alphabet D on City Council Meeting Broadcast Update. Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I'm a little hesitant to respond on this one right now. So we, I have been messaged again, just because I have this, you know, motion response on here that we have had the broadcast freeze a few times while the discussion happened on the homeless issue at the church. So again, this was not in the interest of trying to blame anybody or anything else. It's just how can we make a better system that we're, you know, everyone can enjoy us every Tuesday night in their full glory? So if we could just go back and try to revisit it and look to see what we can do better. Thank you.
Counsel Musia?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was going to say that I was glad to hear that LTC is broadcasting their capabilities back to par with no disruption until I got a text just a while ago that it went haywire four times. So I'm not happy. Thanks.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I understand the challenges that we've been going through here and it's still a moving target and I too have gotten similar text messages to my colleagues tonight about some issues with the broadcast. So I understand that LTC and MIS are still working on it, but, you know, there's still work to be done, apparently. I just wanted to ask a quick question about the Zoom integration that was mentioned as part of the response. I had asked if we had the Zoom potential back in this room for us to be able to join if we're unable to make it for whatever reason and was told that that's not back yet. I see our monitors are off in the room tonight. So I'm just kind of curious with where we are on that and, you know, when that might be restored. I understand there's a lot of challenges and MIS has been working on it, but it is an important piece that I'd like to see us get back to at some point.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Connor Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, we do apologize for the technical difficulties that have been experienced by the public, for this and for all other aspects as we recover. You know, in the response, we think that we've corrected what was the major issue. So for security reasons, we had the booth, the LTC booth, using a mobile encoder as opposed to the hardwired one that is normally in there. While that has been corrected and should allow for less issues going, there are still issues. And it's important for us to understand from the council here, so from these comments, but also from the public, exactly how those errors are occurring. So are they watching it online? Are they watching it on channel ninety-nine? So that we can work with LTC to pinpoint those exact issues and work with them to correct them. As it relates to the use of Zoom, it is available, although we haven't quite rolled it back out for consistent use. So the school committee was able to successfully use Zoom, I think for the superintendent interview, or there was another meeting where they successfully used it because there was some necessity that I don't exactly, I don't exactly know the reason. But, you know, in the event that it must be part of the meeting, we can activate it, but we're still, we're still asking for a little bit of patience from the council and the public until we get back to one hundred percent operational with our systems, which we're very close and the MIS department has been working very diligently at that. But we do apologize, Counselor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. I think it'd be important for everyone, because I'm receiving the same text messages, and it appears that people that are watching it on their phone or their computers, everything is fine. So if it is channel ninety-nine, if you could just let us know after the meeting, we'll try to track that down. But we're getting mixed signals here that everything is fine, once again, on a computer or on the phone. But if it's something else, just, you know, please let us know. We'll continue to try to track it down.
Y'all, Counsel Janess?
Just a quick point of clarification on the Zoom question. Was the school committee able to use it because they did it like a fully remote meeting or were they like a hybrid setup? I'm just curious.
I'll be honest, I did not watch the meeting, so I'm not, I'm not certain.
I'm just curious, my brain was, you know, going into IT guy land.
I think it was, it was hybrid, but I could stand corrected on that, so I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Hearing none. We now move on to the next motion response, alphabet E on LCHS Field Partnership Opportunity. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'm glad that this conversation's occurring. This is something that's been ongoing and we always tried to figure out how. If you look at the list, out of the six fields currently utilized, three are on Gage. That field takes a beating with the usage from a variety of groups. And when I first filed this motion, I believe, it might have been with the previous administration, it was trying to see collaboratively, what can we do to try to improve the quality of some of those fields that are being utilized over there in Centerville? Again, the Gage field, as you can see, there's three of the six sports are being used over there. And anything we could do for improvements would be greatly appreciated, but it's encouraging to see. And I've had some preliminary conversations myself and they seemed like they were, yeah, sure, how can we work together? So thank you for this.
Any other comments? Counsel Gishia?
I do, I think this is a good motion response and I thank the manager for it. One thing that we have talked about just quietly is Edwards Field and maybe making that a multipurpose that could happen with like a synthetic where you could bring multiple teams, you could have soccer, you could have field hockey, you could have everything at one place and then it would alleviate some of the Gage area and give them a really, and I understand underneath it, it's capped and everything and there's a good study that would have to go on, but I just think it might be something to look at and see if you can get an investor in there with Lowell Catholic to do that. And hopefully, I know that there is ways of doing it with investors and if we could do it through them, you might even be able to have it together. But there is something in here that's mentioned in this piece. It says, refer to a joint subcommittee, the City Council Parks and Youth Subcommittee. So I would make a motion to refer this to the City Council's Parks and Youth Services Subcommittee.
Motion by Counsel Gishia, second by Counsel Yan. Any question, discussion on it? On favor, say aye. Post say no, aye is have it. Motion is carry. Any other comments or questions on this motion response that will do it for the motion response for the night? Need a motion to accept, placed on file by Counsel Mercia, second by Counsel Drinkwater. On favor, say aye. Post say no, aye is have it. Motion is carry. We now move on to the six point two. Six point two is communication, reappointment of Monivore to Lowell Housing Authority. Motion to adopt by Counsel Nune, second by Counsel Yan. Any question, discussions on this item? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Counsel Yan?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater? Counsel Gishia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy? Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Nune?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Six point three, communication.
Can we, Mr. Mayor, can we bundle that with six point four?
Okay, motion to bundle six point three and six point four by Counsel Nune, second by Counsel Janess. Six point three is communication, resignation of Beverly Anthes from Election Commission. Six point four, communication, resignation of Gabriel below from Conservation Commission. Motion by Counsel Nune, second by Counsel Rourke. All in favor, say aye. Any, before, take a vote, any questions or comments? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just ask the city manager if he could just send a thank you note to both of these folks for their services and their contributions to the city over the years. Thank you.
No other comments on favor, say aye. Post say no, aye is have it. Motion is carry. We now go to the votes from the city manager. Seven point one.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, in the votes, would it be possible to bundle all the votes, seven point one to seven point nine?
Second.
Second, excellent motion. Counsel Mercia, second by Counsel Nune. We already taken up seven point three, so I'm going to read seven point one through seven point nine, excluding seven point three, which we took a vote earlier already. These are the votes on seven point one, to accept appropriate expend twenty-one million four hundred thousand race grant. Seven point two, vote authorize city manager execute annual action plan fiscal year twenty-three dash twenty-four. Item vote seven point four, vote transfer one million fifty-five thousand snow and ice. Seven point five, vote transfer one million three hundred fifty-two thousand health slash dental insurance. Seven point six, vote transfer twenty thousand disability commission. Seven point seven, vote transfer thirty-five thousand postage. Seven point eight, vote transfer ninety-one thousand energy. Seven point nine, transfer nine fifty thousand dollars payroll taxes. Any comments or questions before we do a roll call? Counsel Gishia?
Thank you. Through you to CFO Baldwin. In the future, when we get these reports, could you please highlight exactly where these accounts attach to? Like, a lot of them say salaries, but there are some in here that are different than salaries in, like the energy from City Hall that we talked about and we weren't going to have money, but we just transferred ninety-one thousand out of it and we added the three fifty. So those are the things that, it takes a lot of work to go through these when you guys already punch in the municipal accounts and know exactly where they come from. So if in the future, we could just have, this came from the energy at City Hall or this came from the police salaries and wages, I just think it makes it a lot, it'll save me a lot of time. And I think that's my goal, but I don't know if that's your goal, but it would make it much easier for all of us to understand, like the unemployment in the workman's comp. My question is, the unemployment that got transferred over? When someone goes to unemployment, doesn't go to unemployment, we save on their salary because it takes time to hire. So why do we filter in an account with unemployment money when we had already appropriated the person's salary for the year and there's a detention time before they actually, before we actually hire again for that position? Why do we have to fill the unemployment with so much money if we're going to have that money left over in salaries and wages?
Mr. Baldwin?
So to answer certainly on your recommendation, that's a good recommendation and some of your colleagues mentioned that having the names would be helpful to the council and I certainly concur. This is a form that was prescribed by a former city auditor, so it's what we've used. It's not Ms. Oaks, but I, you know, I'll lean on Ms. Oaks. I don't think she'll mind if we amend the form for use of, ease of the council. Typically, when we present transfers, we have a, you know, a cover that has a little schedule attached to it, but with the year-end procedures, it's a bit more in the aggregate. So certainly, no problem, we'll do that in the future and I see Mr. Ball making note of that. Your second question about unemployment, so there are two unemployment accounts. The first, we pay unemployment claims for both city and school employees. So on the school employees, we don't have that ability to transfer the funds back and forth. With that one, we would have to. However, with the second one, I suppose we could make an estimate. And it, in recent, it's been quite some time since we've had a significant unemployment expense on the city side. So it's something we can take under advisement and it's an excellent suggestion, but typically this is traditionally how we've budgeted and... but typically, this is traditionally how we've budgeted and paid for the unemployment insurance claims that come into the HR office, but it's certainly something we'll take under advisement, Councilor.
Y'all, a second, Councilor?
Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, I had also contacted you about the codes that I do think would be very helpful, not to have to go in and look them all up. I actually went into the auditor's report and searched for each one of them to find them, so it would have been a lot easier. But the line, the item for health dental insurance has a significant amount of money that was short in that fund. And it says that you're going to do an analysis to determine what changes need to happen. Is there a timeframe for that to happen? Because this is, like I said, quite a lot of money, and I know we've been lucky that we, I guess lucky, I don't know what other word to use, that we had unfilled salary line items that you were able to transfer into this account, but I don't know if that's gonna be sustainable, you know, going forward, so, thank you.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's an excellent question, and the fund that's listed here is number 8426, which is not, it's a internal service fund for health insurance. It was a, it's a relic of when we had a, when we were health, excuse me, self-insured and had a health benefits trust. We've retained since 2012 that account to pay for retiree health insurance, as well as for dental insurance and life insurance for active and retired employees. So we had a conversation earlier this afternoon with our consultant, our health insurance consultant, about doing an audit of our deductions, because what the fund is telling us is that there's, this should break even. There's something going on here. We did a similar transfer last year in the amount of $210,000, and at the time, you know, there was another issue going on with the subsidy that the city was offering to the PEC for retiree health insurance. However, it does appear that there's something else going on, which could be, you know, I hate to venture a guess as to what the problem is before we've completed the analysis, but some of the options we're investigating are that some of the deductions are incorrect, and that's something that, it's a, it's a report and a check that we get from separate entities, so from the Mass State Teachers Retirement System, and from the Lowell Local Retirement System for, again, I'm gonna get into the weeds a little bit, but Mass State Teachers Retirement is for retired teachers and principals, the Local Retirement System is for city retirees, as well as paraprofessionals or custodians in the school district. They each send us checks every month for their employee share of the 25%, so for both active and retired employees, the split is 75-25. And in a perfect world, if all of that were correct, this fund would break even. So there is something we're drilling down into, I'm working with Ms. Oaks and Mrs. Calery in the HR office, but we expect, you know, our timeline for that is to resolve that before the end of the next fiscal year, so that hopefully, we don't have to do another transfer, or we're able to bring forth some recommendations to the manager about adjusting those deductions, if that's the case. But it's most likely a correction that needs to be made, not necessarily a change in the percentage, I certainly don't mean that, but it's likely that people are being mischarged for their deductions, and that's something we need to clean up with an audit that is ongoing currently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question on 7.7, which is the postage transfer. In the memo, it references a mailing about the upcoming election. I'm just curious, is that something that has been sent, or something that will be sent? I'm only asking because if it's something that will be sent, I would think that would be in FY '24, not '23.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there were a number of factors that led to the overage in the postal account, one being the upcoming mailings that are due, and while they are going to be FY '24 mailings, with the mail machine in the elections office, we prepay for the postage. And so in order to load the credits onto the machine, we have, Pitney Bowes is the vendor that we use, we have to buy the credits ahead of time, and so in order to do that, to be ready for Mr. Pappas to do his mailings, we want to be all locked and loaded in advance, so we want to do that now. And there was a, so the postage budget sits within the Treasurer's Department, even though the machine itself sits in the Elections Division here in City Hall. But there was sufficient surplus in the Treasurer's Office budget, so the transfer that's proposed is to move money from salary and wages in the Treasurer's Budget that's surplus at year-end, so that we can prepay that postage and do that mailing, as well as other mailings like the mailing to the retirees for LifeLock, and for the income in expense forms for the Assessor's Office for personal property. So in order to get everything out, we wanted to prepay.
Okay, so this is less of a budget shortfall issue, and more of taking advantage of an opportunity to pull a cost forward, because of the structure of how the spend works.
Little bit of both, but on the mailing for the census, that is certainly, for the elections, rather, that is certainly the case. We're prepaying and looking forward.
Thank you.
Councilor Gitchia?
Just one more question to the manager on the annual action plan that was put forth. Is there any way that in the future, we could get backup to what it's being spent on? Because I think it would highlight really well these programs that we're actually paying for, because all we see is a number, like you see the food pantry. It would really be nice, okay, how many meals does this actually support and things like that? Or, you know, you got the summer youth arts program at the Whistle House Museum, I think that would be really cool to see exactly, okay, we spent $30,000 here, what did it actually, what's it going for? Or what did it do the previous year? If we could just add backup to it, it would be very interesting to read and probably promote these places. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on these votes? Hearing none. Need a motion to adopt by Councilor Mercier, second by Councilor Rourke. Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Councilor Yan?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councilor Gennes?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy, Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor Nune?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
We now go to section eight on the agenda, which is the orders from the city manager. 8.1, order abandoned portion of Pratt Avenue. Need a motion to refer to public hearing on July 25, 2023 at 7:00 PM by Councilor Nune, second by Councilor Robinson. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. On favors, I oppose, say no, the ice have it, motions carry. We already taken up item, section nine on the agenda. We now go to section 10, the petitions.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have 8.1.
We have 8.1? We just took up 8.1? Yeah, that's all we, yeah, we're jumping around, I can see that, you know, we just took up 8.1. So now we are at 10.1, correct, Madam Clerk? 10.1 is the miscellaneous, Jeanette Waria slash Hagan Morel, for the benefit of Hannel Morel, request installation of handicap parking sign at 173 East Merrimack Street, first floor. Need a motion to refer to Transportation Engineer for report and recommendation by Councilor Gennes, second by Councilor Robinson. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. On favors, I oppose, say no, the ice have it, motions carry. We now have reached the most exciting part of the meeting, which are the city council motions, in my opinion, anyway. Item 11.1, Councilor Scott, request city manager work with appropriate department to investigate if there's a design flaw around water drainage on Addie Way, second by Councilor Nune. Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually submitted this motion a few weeks ago, and quite a bit of work has actually happened since it was submitted, but I just wanted to really put it out there, let the residents know that we are working on this, the city is working to address it. During the fall, when I was out driving around, I noticed flooding, just light flooding on the road, the vacuum truck came out, they did the catch basins at that time. It stopped, it wasn't consistent. When I went back by there, a resident had reached out to me over the last couple of weeks about the amount of water that was there. There was a large amount of standing water, the cars pulling through were up to their doors, and the city did send somebody out to start investigating, and we're just waiting for a response on what they're going to do at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council, we would like to keep this on and going. This is something that we're working hand in glove with Lowell Housing Authority to find out what is happening over there, but to your point, we have some pretty good ideas, and hopefully, we'll have this rectified sooner rather than later. So that's something that is moving forward. And I know that a couple of other councils called, but thank you very much, Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. In a situation like this, can the city and the Lowell Housing Authority go back to the contractor who builds houses? And I do have a client who purchased a home right there on Addie Way, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council, we are working through that, actually, right now. That is the future site, if you would, of, I believe, section five. Yeah, I believe it's section five. So that is a future site of additional homeowner opportunities. So we will be talking with them, and once again, the Lowell Housing Authority, and the Executive Director was just in my office just last week, having this discussion because of what was brought up over there. There are some issues, and Aaron Fox from our team has been in constant contact, and Assistant City Manager Masato, he's got the ball on this, and we hope to have a report back probably within the next seven to 10 days as to what the solution will be.
Thank you. I'm trying to get a clear picture of your answer, is that if the drainage issues that was part of the construction, will the construction company be responsible to fix that, you know?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council, I apologize, Councilor, but if the, if section five of River's Edge was built, this wouldn't be an issue. So I'm not sure at this time, but I want to hold my thoughts on this. I'm not sure of the next steps until we rally back with Mr. Fox and the Executive Director. So I guess what I'm saying is, if the fifth section was built, presumably, this would not be a problem. So we are working towards that end. But speaking with Commissioner St. Seer from our team over at DPW, as well as the newly appointed Executive Director, Aaron Fox, over at Wastewater, we feel as though there is something we can all work together to mitigate, help to mitigate the situation that's over there.
Thank you.
Until such time that the fifth section is built up.
Thank you.
Y'all, a second, Councilor Yan, Councilor Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The minute this happened, to see it on Facebook posts live, you know, everyone see it, I mean, it's like, what happened here? And thanks to Councilor Scott for quick respond to filing motion and calling the DPWs and you, Mr. Managers, respond to it. I think we can rectify this, as managers indicated, that section five, the Lowell Housing Authority is planning to build a couple dozen houses to finish off the projects there. It should have been done a while back, so if this is part of the issue, then the building of the half a dozen of housings down that area will probably address these issues as well. They're gonna look at overall of it and see how we can address it. So, yeah, I hope that resolved it very soon. So, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. I would like to just say thank you very much to DPW and, of course, Wastewater. As everybody knows, over the past, I don't know if it hasn't stopped raining over the past 30-plus days, which is causing us a little bit of strife. I know that Council Robinson, Council Mercier have gotten phone calls, but if it wasn't for the folks in the VacCons really getting out there and trying to open those areas up, it does make a very good point in talking to Counselor, excuse me, Commissioner St. Seer, about the 44 tons that we pulled off in just one day of silt and dirt and debris. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the DPW crews, Wastewater crews that were out there, pretty much, as much as we need them recently, and it's been pretty much, I don't know if it's stopped raining yet, but we're on day 30, which is causing us a little bit of a backup with a whole host of issues throughout the city, but they are still working and making it happen for our city. So we will get you this report, and hopefully, sooner rather than later. If anyone else is experiencing any of that heavy water, please let us know, because as I look around here, every council has called me, and the Assistant City Manager, and we've been trying to keep those catch basins as open as we can.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Hearing none. On favors, I oppose, say no, the ice have it, motions carry. We already have taken up motion 11.2. We are now at motion 11.3. Councilor Gitchia, request city manager provide an update on releasing all executive session minutes that no longer warrants confidentiality, second by Councilor Mercier. Councilor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. And I'm not so sure that this is something that the manager does, I'm not sure exactly who's, I think it goes to LA, and then LA says these are no longer needed to be confidential. But when we go out into the public and we start talking about things, take the Hamilton Canal District, we can't talk about it, but other people are telling us how well things can be done, because it was done in executive session, so it's not fair to this board that we can't say certain things that are done in there. You look at the Opera Funds, you look at, you know, the contracts that are done, we look at, you know, estimated timeframes and things. So when we look at stuff like the Lasher Agreement, I know that's no longer something that should be confidential, but we didn't release those minutes. And if we would have, we could have went back to when the former manager was here, and what the demands were from the university, and how we ended up the way we did. I think that these are things that we should be able to promote as a board, and so it's important that, for us, I think, that we get these things released so that we could actually rebut some of the things that are being said in public, and actually stand on what we've actually done. So that's the reason why this is before you, that we would like to see some of it released.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Hearing none. That motion was second by Councilor Mercier. All in favor, say aye, oppose, say no, the ice have it, motions carry. We already taken up motion 11 point, actually, no, we have not, the next motion is 11.4. Council Robinson, request city manager explore potential opportunities to partner with LTC to improve the quality of service, as well as assist the city increase public communication pipeline, second by Councilor Rourke. Council Robinson?
Thank you. This is just take a look at it and see whether short or long term, is something that we could do better with LTC as a partner to improve the overall, everything, and also kind of bolster the city's communication network. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Hearing none. On favors, I oppose, say no, the ice have it, motions carry. The next motion is also by, it's motion number 11.5, by Council Robinson, request city manager have DPW address pedestrian walkway, pedestrian safety issues due to overgrowth citywide in a timely manner, with consideration given to bringing in additional equipment if necessary, second by Councilor Yan. Council Robinson?
Thank you. With all this rain, and just periodically, I mean, we do this in other communities, that if they have to, they have their people utilize what they have on hand, and they'll bring in a big tractor with a flare mower attachment, especially at corners and intersections where it needs to be cut back, because you cause blind spots. But even now, with an election coming up, we have a lot of people from different groups that are just trying to get information out, how to get people registered, et cetera, and Myrtle Street, Fourth, those are two in my district that I've seen firsthand, that are just to the point where people are walking in the street, because the overgrowth is so severe. So, I mean, it's a perfect combination this year with all the rain and the weather, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor Yan?
Quickly, just on that note about overgrown and weed, I just want to thank the manager and the team for clearing out the entrance on Western Ave to the studio, it looked beautiful, and the next thing we'll have the arch and the artwork, and then something like that will be beautiful for the area. Thank you.
Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add to this a little bit, if we could just make sure we pay some attention to the bus huts around the district, a lot of them are really overgrown, and I don't know what department handles that, but if we could just make sure they're included in this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Hearing none. On favors, I oppose, say no, the ice have it, motions carry. Motion number 11.6, Council Robinson, request city manager have the law department provide insight on the process to examine banning the sale of glass pens or glass stem cells in convenience stores within the city limits, second by Councilor Gennes, Council Robinson?
Again, this goes back to some of the challenges that we're facing. It's being utilized as pretty much crack pipes. I mean, to be blunt and honest, that's what it's being utilized for. I, I mean, to be blunt and honest, that, that's what it's being utilized for, so the more we can do to make it uncomfortable for that kind of behavior to just, I mean, it's not gonna stop or cure anything, but any, any path forward, um, the more uncomfortable we can make it, I think, uh, it's, it's better than just turning a blind eye to this. Thank you.
Any comments or questions on these motions? Hear none, on the favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is 11.7. Counsel Robinson, request city manager have the proper department address the increase in speeding in areas of Christian Mount Pleasant as well as around the reservoir during heavy commute times, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Robinson?
These areas are being used as cut-throughs, uh, during peak traffic hours, so again, it's, it's, any help from LPD or traffic monitoring would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on this motion? On the favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. The next motion, motion is 11.8. Counsel Robinson, request city manager provide an update on catch basin cleaning progress, second by Counselor Lewin. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Uh, especially with all this rain, i- it's washing more and more sand and silt from runoff into the basin, so, I mean, I know it's tough to get a grip on it, but hopefully we'll get some dry weather and I'm not sure how many they even had a shot, if any, to go out and, and just maintain routine maintenance, never let alone unclog GM, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on, uh, these motions? Hear none, on favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is 11.9, also by Counsel Robinson, request mayor create a special event subcommittee, second by Counselor Yem. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Um, I think this is a potential to, to vet some of these ideas, um, before they come back to the full body and work with case and, and the other organizations, Mosaic, before, you know, we, we bring it for recommendation or suggestions and, and have some solid information to move forward, so, thank you.
Any other comments? Hear none, on the favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. We already have taken up motion number 11.10. We are now going to mo- motion 11.11, 11.11. Counsel Robinson, Counsel Scott, uh, request city manager provide update on housing summit. Before I have the maker of the motions speak on this, Counselor Janess, was that you want to request the maker of the motion to add your motion earlier?
Yes, if it's okay with the makers of the motion, I'd like to add just other medium and long-term homelessness strategy update to, to this.
Would that be okay by Counsel Robinson, Counsel Scott? If Madam Clerk could make the amendment, um, to the, the motion? Who would like to speak on this? Counsel Robinson?
Uh, I think it's pretty apparent, uh, you know, we're looking for updates because, again, uh, we've heard it from, uh, registered speakers, this challenge is gonna take all hands on deck, so, a- any update on when we can get people to the table and tell them to bring their checkbooks would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Any other comments? No other comments? On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is 11.12. Counsel Janess, request city manager have proper department begin investigation and draft of a shadow conduit ordinance for the council's consideration, second by Counselor Musia. Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is something other communities do. Uh, some people call it a shadow conduit ordinance, some people call it a dig ones ordinance. Um, there's various ways to approach the problem. Basically, the idea is, once somebody opens up a street to do some work, just have them throw some extra conduit down there that the city can use for its own purposes going forward if we have to run a fiber cable to connect a building, whatever. Um, over time, you get a network of conduit that's in the ground and, and you get it basically a pennies on the dollar of what it would cost you if you were to dig up the streets and install it yourself at that time. Some communities say, hey, Verizon is part of digging up the street, you're gonna install conduit for us. Some of them say, hey, Verizon, when you dig up the street, we'll give you conduit. I don't know what the best way to go about it is, but, um, I think we start talking about this, we might be able to, uh, set a long-term plan in motion to, uh, help some things in the future. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hear none, on the favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is 11.13, also by Counsel Janess, to request city manager have proper department reach out to the Middlesex Sheriff's Office to request that the mobile command center be deployed to the back central neighborhood as it was last year, second by Counselor Rook. Uh, Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, excuse me, um, we talked about, talked earlier about short-term versus long-term solutions and this is a, a short-term thing, to be sure, um, but the, the neighbors in the area, when it was, uh, deployed last year, all reported that it was an immediate and noticeable positive effect on the quality of life in the neighborhood. Um, and at the very least, if we can just get these neighbors a break by, you know, putting this bus there for however long, the Sheriff's Department is, uh, is willing to help us out with that. I know the neighbors would be most appreciative, um, as would I and many of my colleagues. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Here, Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Uh, Counselor, we are looking at that. We did talk to the Sheriff's Office, we're getting confirmation. We believe it's gonna be the week before Folk Fest, that we're looking from 4 to 10. Um, and so that's something that I probably, I know that we're on a two-week schedule, so I'm probably gonna try to update everybody in regards to that, but it would be the week before, um, Folk Fest. So, and I just want to make sure that that is clear from the information that we have and I'll make sure that Assistant City Manager Machado follows up with all the council on that, for that area and how that will, um, how, uh, LPD will be talking to Superintendent Hudon and how that's gonna interact with his, um, with his, um, offices, offices in that area. So, that's just an up, it's just an update on that.
Right, I appreciate that very much and, uh...
Thank you for bringing it to our attention earlier. We're just, uh, we're trying to get, get ahead of some of this stuff.
Absolutely. And one of the, one of the things I forgot to include in this motion is just going forward, if we can't have the bus there long-term, um, if LPD might be able to deploy those, those cameras they have on trailers in that area, that might, might help as well. Um, I don't know if, if that's a possibility, but something else to look at. Thank you.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you. Actually, Counsel Janess just really hit what I was going to say. Um, I know Lowell Police Department also has a mobile, they did at least, a mobile van that's a security, you know, and it's all marked saying that it's a surveillance van and I, and that was deployed in my neighborhood at one point in time and it, it definitely helped. So, if that's another thing that we could look at, if the Sheriff's Office isn't a long-term type of solution. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hear none, on the favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Uh, already taken up motion 11.14 and 11.15. The last motion of the night is 11.16. A motion by Counsel Janess, request city manager put together a neighborhood summit with the back central neighborhood leaders, residents, business owners, public safety representatives and other stakeholders to discuss strategies around improving quality of life in the neighborhood, second by Counselor Musia. Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this, this really goes back to everything we were discussing earlier and the neighborhood's strong desire, as expressed to me and I know several of my colleagues, to just be able to be engaged more with the city administration, to understand what the challenges are, uh, to be able to communicate potential solution strategies, um, you know, on an ongoing basis. So, this wouldn't be a one-time thing. I, I would hope that it would be, you know, maybe partnered with the back central neighborhood group and, you know, tied in that way. Um, I would like to edit this to add, uh, religious organizations as, as people who should be included. I think the, the folks who came down from the church earlier spoke, um, pretty, pretty on point about some of the things that they're, uh, dealing with and, you know, I think, I think including them in this conversation will be a good thing going forward. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Um, that was the last motion, all in favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it.
Mr. Mayor, um...
Counsel Robinson, you have a comment or question to that motion?
Uh, does my colleague need a second on amendment?
Um, the, the clerk just made a, a notation, um, to, to amend that.
Okay.
Um, uh, do we need a, it's just a, add basically to, to the motion? So, I think we're good with that, Counselor. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Uh, we're now down to the fun part, the announcement. Counselor Yem?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to wish my brother, Counselor Corey Robinson, uh, happy, uh, wonderful birthday. May your French language improve as you get older. He speaks French fluently, I just want to let everybody know.
Any, any other announcements? Uh, none, just a quick announcement, um, the Folk Festival came to make a presentation early tonight. Um, the Folk Festival is only, uh, a couple of weeks or so away and we do need volunteers who will be doing the bucket brigade. If you would like to join me on my team, please contact me or contact Danielle McFadden or the Folk Festival, uh, website. Um, we need all the help that, that we can get. With that said, then a motion to adjourn by Counsel Rook, second by Counsel Scott, on favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Good night. Thank you, everyone, for watching.[1784.71][1784.71]